Welcome, everyone. I now call the October 1st, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, we'll take a moment to take a roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name. City clerk?
Thank you. Councilmember Zorn?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Here.
Councilmember Kerr?
Here.
Councilmember Manke? Councilmember Dodd? Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Here.
All present, with the exceptions of Councilmembers Manke and Councilmember Dodd.
Thank you. Before we continue with the rest of the agenda, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently, and mute your microphone when not speaking. Also, as we are in election season, I'd like to remind everyone of certain campaign-related restrictions regarding public comments on ballot measures. Public speakers generally cannot specifically address a campaign or ballot measure at a public meeting or during the public comment period. RCW 4217A 555 prohibits government agencies from allowing the use of public facilities directly or indirectly for campaign purposes. Allowing speakers to speak in favor of or in opposition to a ballot measure or campaign during a public meeting or during a public comment period would violate this prohibition. Are there any changes to the meeting agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public engagement opportunities. We have the Arbor Day celebration on Saturday, October 12th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at Blythe Park. You can join Bothell Park staff in celebrating the 152nd anniversary of Arbor Day and help plant trees and shrubs at Blythe Park. Registration is required, and all ages are welcome. We've also got the Fire Prevention Week Open House. It's Saturday, October 12th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the downtown Bothell Fire Station Number 42. You can meet your local firefighters, tour the station, the brand-new station, and view live demonstrations. We've got an open house for the Park at Bothell Landings conceptual design project, Thursday, October 17th, here at City Hall, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. You can learn about the refined conceptual design for the park. Project consultants will provide details and collect feedback about the park's development. Next up, we have a couple proclamations. We have three proclamations, and I need to get the order right. All right, the first proclamation is for Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas since time immemorial, indigenous people have built vibrant and diverse cultures, safeguarding land, language, spirit, knowledge, and traditions across generations. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day is recognized every year on the second Monday in October, giving us the opportunity to celebrate the invaluable contributions and resilience of indigenous peoples, recognize their inherent sovereignty, and commit ourselves to building authentic relationships with our tribal and indigenous communities. And whereas Washington State is home to 29 federally-recognized indigenous tribes and well over 300,000 Washington residents identify as American Indian, Alaska Native, or Indigenous. And whereas before incorporation, the land that we now call Bothell was first inhabited by the Coast Salish people, a diverse group of more than 40 independent nations who speak more than 20 languages and whose territories stretch throughout coastal British Columbia and Washington State. And whereas indigenous people were separated from their homelands due to battles, genocide, and Western expansion, and while honoring the customs and accomplishments of Native Americans, we also acknowledge our nation's history of settler colonialism that has inflicted violence and deprivation upon indigenous people. And whereas despite the attempted eradication of indigenous communities, Native Americans continue to live, learn, work, and contribute to the community in Bothell. They have rich and diverse cultures, traditions, and histories. Now therefore, I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim October 14th, 2024, as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the City of Bothell, and encourage our community to actively seek knowledge about the original inhabitants of North America and commit to preserve Native American heritage and traditions for generations to come. And we have somebody here to accept the proclamation?
Thank you. Yes, I appreciate a mic whenever I can get one. So, good evening. Greetings to the community guests, council members, Mayor Thompson. My name is Victor Begay, and I'm Navajo. My family is originally from New Mexico. I'm faculty of American Indian and Indigenous Studies and tribal liaison at Cascadia College. I'm happy to be here again and formally receive this proclamation. I appreciate the council's attention to and recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day 2024. This day holds great promise for all to pause and reflect on the experiences of indigenous communities. I'm particularly impressed with the council's declaration, quote, "Despite the attempted eradication of indigenous communities, Native Americans continue to live, learn, work, and contribute to the community in Bothell. They have rich and diverse cultures, traditions, and histories," end quote. This is so true. In my work, I strive to find understanding in how people interpret the world. I look for perspectives that complement and challenge my own beliefs. Indigenous Peoples' Day provides time and affords opportunities for everyone to challenge their own beliefs. To complement this proclamation, I invite all City of Bothell employees, community members, and guests to the Third Annual Cascadia College Indigenous Peoples' Day event on Monday, October 14th, at 11:00 a.m. on our campus. The theme is "Our Kinship with Salmon." My colleague Gabby can provide details and has been a staunch partner in all of the work. She has opportunities for us to continue thinking about how we can build our relationship. And I look forward to that strong and continued relationship. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Next up, we have National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas National Domestic Violence Awareness Month was established in October 1987 to create a community dialogue about violence, to advocate for legislation and law enforcement to protect survivors of domestic violence, and to encourage public awareness and action to prevent abuse. And whereas domestic violence is a pattern of physical, emotional, verbal, and sexual abuse, which includes threats, intimidation, isolation, and financial control. And whereas nearly 3 in 10 women and 1 in 10 men in the U.S. have experienced rape, physical violence, and/or stalking by a partner, and reported it having a related impact on their functioning. And whereas while violence impacts all people, some individuals and communities experience inequities and risk for violence. Some communities are more than twice as likely to experience domestic violence during their lifetime, including multiracial, American Indian, Alaska Native, Black, bisexual women, bisexual men, transgender people, and people with a disability. And whereas in 2022, nearly 48% of intimate partner violence and 46% of domestic violence victimizations were not reported to law enforcement. And whereas when survivors are ready, there are resources to help, including the National Domestic Violence Hotline, Washington State Coalition Against Domestic Violence, and the Domestic Violence Services of Snohomish County. Now therefore, I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim October as National Domestic Violence Prevention Month in the City of Bothell, joining advocates in communities across the country and taking action to prevent domestic violence and to stand with survivors of domestic violence. And we have folks from the community here to accept. Awesome.
Thank you all so much for having us here and for declaring this month as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. As you all have recognized, this is a very pervasive issue. We know that, as was said, 1 in 3 and 1 in 10 women and men respectively will experience DV. We also know that an average of 24 people per minute will be experiencing some form of intimate partner violence. That's 12 million people in the United States a year. 48% of all U.S. adults report experiencing some form of psychological aggression from an intimate partner. And over half of female homicide victims are murdered by an intimate partner. This is why this is so important. It's heavy work, it's hard stuff, but it's really important for our community to be talking about this. And that is why our services exist. Because of the continued support from community leaders such as yourself and community members, we are able to support survivors when they are on their hardest days. From July of 2023 to June of 2024, our organization interacted with over 20,000 members of our community. Our shelter provided housing for 106 adults and 146 children. Our support line received 4,576 calls. 460 of our clients received over 2,000 hours of legal advocacy support. 99 adults and 163 children received safe nights in transitional and rapid housing units, sorry. And over 6,000 youth and 644 adults participated in DV prevention and education training through our programs. This is a lot of our community. That's not even all of our statistics that we have. These are just the important ones to note. Through all of this work, our community has been there for us and the survivors that we serve, providing necessary supplies, participating in volunteer trainings, attending our events, and donating to support our survivors. Should you or anyone that you know need our services, want to get involved with volunteering, or participate in our events, feel free to call our support line. That number is 425-252-2873. Thank you, guys, again, for your continued support.
And thank you for the work you do. All right, next up, we have a proclamation for Hindu American Awareness and Appreciation Month. And this is the last proclamation. Whereas Hindu American Awareness and Appreciation Month seeks to bring local awareness, recognition, and acknowledgement of the significant contributions made by Hindu Americans across the United States. And whereas Hindu Americans represent diverse ethnic backgrounds, including individuals of Indian, Pakistani, Bangladeshi, Malaysian, Indonesian, Afghani, Nepali, Bhutanese, Sri Lankan, Fijian, Caribbean, and European descent. And whereas our nation has greatly benefited from Hindu Americans, especially through the Venanta philosophy, Ayurvedic medicine, classical art, dance, music, meditation, yoga, literature, and community service. And whereas October holds significance as the birth month of Mahatma Gandhi, and often where major Hindu holidays such as Navarati and Diwali are celebrated. And whereas Hindu Americans share the entrepreneurial spirit of America and contribute to economic vitality, growth, and well-being. And whereas despite their positive contributions, Hindu Americans face stereotypes and misconceptions about their heritage and have been the targets of bullying, discrimination, hate speech, and bias-motivated crimes. Now therefore, I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do proclaim October as Hindu American Awareness and Appreciation Month to increase understanding of the Hindu American community and celebrate the influence their extraordinary cultural, ethnic, linguistic, and religious diversity has on our city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and all office bearers for recognizing October as Hindu Heritage Month. Myself, my name is Deepak Thikku, and I am with an organization called as Hindu Swayamsevak Sangh, which is a Hindu religious faith-based organization. We have chapters in all across the country. And then there are some other organizations also who are very obliged that you are doing this, proclaiming October as Hindu Heritage Month. We have SEWA. SEWA translates into service, service like in the form of getting food to shelters and groceries and all other things that we can do. So this thing, this proclamation, which I'm highly appreciative and highly respectful to the city of Bothell, that you have been doing it for the past so many years, it means a lot to us, to Hindus, Hindu Americans residing here, within Bothell, or within other cities of Greater Seattle metropolitan area, like Bellevue, Snoqualmie, Renton, all these cities to help us and do get this into us. Because it means that we are being acknowledged as an integral part of the society, and we can contribute better. So, thank you one more time, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everybody. Thank you.
And thank you. All right, next up is public comment. The city has accepted public comment in writing, as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you will have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make note of items requiring follow-up. City clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. We do not have anybody signed up to speak this evening. However, if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to do so, please step to the podium. You'll have three minutes. Go ahead, Mr. Swanson. If you are in the virtual audience, please raise your hand, and we will panel you in after we do the in-person.
Well, I've got a little bit of a laundry list. Greetings, all. I just wanted to run through today. Kind of reflection. My name's Mark Swanson. I've lived in Bothell since 1991 and live on West Hill. Now, I've heard there's an affordable housing problem. Well, actually, there's not. How do I know that? Because I moved here in 1991. I rented a two-bedroom, one-bath apartment for $700, 780 square feet. Carports worn out, the appliances were bad, $700 bucks a month. Minimum wage is $4.25. Took 160 hours to make that 700. Well, today, minimum wage is over $16 an hour. Now, that same 160 hours is $2,600 a month rent. Quick check-a-zillow will show you. There's all kinds of two-bedroom, one-bath apartments available. In fact, three days ago, there were 291 of them in Bothell. We don't have an affordable housing issue. What we have is a ground-based, entry-level equity ownership problem. And you can't solve that by stuffing the community with 90% added rentals. It's not going to solve the affordable equity ownership issue. To try to do so by renting only destroys the neighborhoods, destroys our salmon, our trees, our nature. And as Carrie Westerbeck liked to say two planning sessions ago, "We can infill from city border to city border." Is that our future? As we go from 50,000 to 80,000 or 75,000, given the land-use hybrid 2.5 model, which actually will allow us to go all the way, add 35,000, almost all of which are renters? We don't have an affordable housing problem. Now, buses, they shed 200 times more tire wear particles than a single-family car. Inner-city buses are destroying our river and our streams. Urban density does not result in economic vitality. Carrie Westerbeck, the founder of BOPA, he posted on social media that six stories, no lot-line adjustments, no setbacks, are fine in any neighborhood. Fine. Well, we're not even doing a good job on CO2 until the city buses hit 30% capacity both with and against the traffic flow. They're CO2-negative. They're adding more CO2. So you guys aren't even good at that? What are you good at? We're not doing good in science. You're not doing good in CO2. You're not doing good in affordable housing. All you're doing is stealing from me.
Mr. Swanson, your time is up. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak? Is there anyone in the virtual audience who wishes to speak? That's all I have. Mayor Thompson?
Thank you, city clerk. All right, next up, we are on to reports. First up is the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have three reports that are a bit substantial tonight, but I do have one quick update that I wanted to add before we turn things over to our Snohomish County Councilmember, Jared Mead. As council will recall, we had multiple conversations in September about the city contemplating refinancing the City Hall bonds for the building that we're in, and council did give direction to move forward. There's really three significant steps in that process, and just wanted to provide council a quick update. So at the end of September, the first step that we had was to reaffirm our financial credit rating, in which we continue to receive a strong rating of AA1 rating from Moody's Financial. So that's great news, and again, a good, solid foundation of what we'll be discussing about for our budget upcoming, and really thankful for the solid financial management of the city that's been taking place. The second step occurred this morning, which is where we did go out to market to see what was out there for this refinancing. And I'm pleased to share that we were able to accept an offer. And back in September, I'm looking at the Agenda Bill for September 3rd, we were calculating about $1.9 million in savings if we moved forward with refinancing, and the market was more favorable than that. So we were able to now calculate an estimated savings of $2.48 million, so net present value, in the remaining 15 years of the loan, which is about 6.37%. So that's great news, and again, a good step of financial management. The third thing that'll take place will be in a couple of weeks, towards the end of the month, of where we will actually do the title work of going from leasing this facility to being in ownership. And as you'll recall, there's a number of opportunities that do open up to the city by having ownership of the building as opposed to leasing the building, including the opportunity to pursue federal funding for energy investments and other projects that are helpful to maintain this amenity for the City of City Hall. So we're excited for that. What I want to, in closing, we, at times, get to experience the impactful services that the city staff provide, and sometimes that's out and about in the community, and we see our crews out there fixing what is broken or inspecting new infrastructure that's going in. We see our park crews that are maintaining our parks or trail system, and we see our public safety workers who are out keeping us safe, and we can be appreciative. Just want to point out that in this transaction, our finance team is an example of internal services that happen every day. It's been a busy season, and in the month of September, we have three things colliding. We were closing out on a state audit, which we welcome every year, and was a little bit behind because of some staffing challenges at the state. So the timeline gets pushed back, and our finance team responded. They were working to support this effort, which is pretty significant. We don't refinance $35 million of bonds very often, as well as getting ready to close up a recommended budget to bring to council here shortly, and all of that happening at the same time. So just wanted to say thank you to our finance team, led by Director Kwan Wong, who is in the audience tonight, for their just outstanding work of making sure that we can balance all three of those efforts. Because at the bottom line, the reason that we do it and the reason that it's important is in service to the community, so wanted to point that as well. With that, that's my update for tonight, and I am pleased then to call on, we're getting an update from our Snohomish County District 4 representative, Councilmember Jeremy. And as a city that gets to be blessed into two counties, it's great to have Councilmember Mead with us tonight and talk about some of the work that's happening at Snohomish County. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. This is on now. Okay, light means on. Thank you. Well, thank you, council. Thanks for the introduction. Thank you, Mayor, and council members for inviting me and for allowing me some time on your busy agenda. I was just looking at it. It looks pretty packed, so I appreciate getting this slice of time to talk with you all. I have two main reasons or intentions for my visit tonight. One is to talk a little bit about Snohomish County and share a little bit about, I think, where the status of the county is, and we're going through some major adjustments this year. We've got our first biannual budget, and we're doing a comprehensive plan update, as you all are going through the same process right now. Just wanted to share a little bit about that. And then, second, the majority of the time, I'd like to spend just being available to you all to have a conversation, really, and hear from you, maybe how we can partner a little bit better, some of the ways that the county can maybe assist you in some of your priorities here in Bothell. So first, I brought a presentation to talk a little bit about the county. So just some facts about Snohomish County. Snohomish County is, over the last decade, the fastest-growing county in the entire state. We're actually top, can you all see the presentation, by the way? No, you all can see it. You all can? Okay. You have computers in front of you. Is that what it is? You're high-tech in the City of Bothell. On the county, we've just got our blank wood die, so. So as you can see there, one of the fastest-growing counties in the entire country, actually, top 10 over the last decade as far as population growth. And most of that growth is happening in South Snohomish County, because most of it is being pushed out from Seattle and King County. And so the district that I represent, the district that Bothell resides in, is District 4. And if you're looking at that map, and you're like, where the heck is District 4? It's because we're the smallest geographical district. They're broken up by population. So that shows you how dense our population here is, how packed in we are here in District 4 in South Snohomish County. Over the next 20 years, we're projected to add another 300,000 people in Snohomish County. There's not a lot of space here. I was born and raised here in Snohomish County, and if you just look around and open your eyes, you can tell, like, 300,000 people, where is everybody going to go? So this growth has presented a lot of opportunity. We have a lot of new, diverse, different types of people, different types of businesses coming here. But that also presents some growing pains, as I don't have to tell you here in Bothell. You're very aware, transportation strains, strains on our school systems, strains on our environment, calls for, you know, conversations about conservation versus building affordable housing. We just heard from an impassioned citizen talking about that, that exact idea. And then also, obviously, we've got strains on our budgets, and we'll get into that here in a second. So we can go to that next slide, please. Thank you. That graph does not do justice to what I'm about to say, but what we're trying to represent here with this graph is the difference between our revenues and our expenses in Snohomish County. Our last five-year forecast, which is what's represented up there in that graph, and you can see it better in the table there with the actual raw numbers, is that Snohomish County is spending more money, essentially, than we're bringing in, and that's not a good thing. And so it's something we need to adjust, and that we need to be cognizant of, and we need to adjust. And there's some things that play into that, and we can get into that a little bit in the presentation, but I'm not going to go into a ton of detail on it, at least not here in this forum. But our structural deficit, really, one of the, at least the silver linings to it, is that we have done a decent job over the last four or five years in Snohomish County, putting away some of our one-time revenues that we've had. We had a major sale of a property during the pandemic. Dollars came in, as you're well aware here at the city, dollars came in, and there was some opportunity there. So we've been able to put some money away. So as far as our savings account or our reserve funds go, we're doing well in that scenario, but the fact that we're on this trajectory and we're spending more every year to the tune of $10 to $15 million, depending on what year you're talking about, we're slowly, or we're quickly approaching that red number we're not happy to approach at any time in any county, city, state government. And one of the big things, and I just put a note there on there, one of the major factors of this is our salaries. That's most of our expenses, our salary and benefits. We just did a class comp study at the county that showed us, and we'll talk a little bit about this in the future slides, but that we are well behind our comparables when it comes to salary and benefits, not just in any single department. It's our planners, it's our engineers and our public works team, it's our officers, it's our prosecutors. And so we're way behind. We're having a lot of trouble with recruitment and retention with our employees all over the spectrum. That's something we are addressing. We're in negotiations with the union now to fix that, but that's just going to be added on top of our structural deficit and something we have to be aware of. And we'll go to the next slide there. So really, in local government, as you guys know, there's two options for revenue. You've got the expenses versus the revenue equation, and there's really two opportunities there. You're talking about either increasing revenues or decreasing expenses, or both. With local governments, we're limited in our options for how we can increase revenues. I mean, our main revenue sources, like in the cities, are property taxes and sales taxes. I've got a table there that you can see, but really, the majority of it is the sales and the property taxes, and that'll be relevant here in a minute. And so we'll move on to the next slide there. I apologize for this pie chart and for the next pie chart, because they're abominations. But if you look at the high level there is, I'm trying to show you with this graph, is that our total budget for the general fund is around $350 million a year. The vast majority of that is spent, we're talking about general fund dollars here, is in the public safety realm. So that's, of course, the sheriff's office, but that's corrections, that's the courts, that's our prosecutors. And so 63% of vast majority, the next biggest department as far as general fund spending, is Parks and Rec at 5%, Human Services at 2. So I just like to highlight that anytime I'm talking about a budget, when I have a mic, that people are listening, because there's a lot of conversations about budgets with governments, and there's a lot of conversations about public safety, but nobody really understands, or at least in those conversations, do we ever talk about what we're spending the money on. It's a budget as a theory, rather than what it actually means. And whenever you're talking about cutting funding or reducing expenses, you're inevitably talking also about the public safety sector, which is a legitimate conversation to have, but it's one that we should go into understanding what it actually means. So the next slide here will show the difference between our general fund budget, which is a much uglier pie chart, because it becomes a lot bigger, our general fund budget versus our total budget. Once you include the grants and the special revenues, the picture becomes a lot different. And so within our $1.7 billion a year budget, once you bring in all those extra funds, you see the proportions change a lot. And I just, I think that that's a really important thing for citizens to understand when we're talking about budget and where we're putting our investments and what priorities local governments are, rising to the top and moving down. what priorities, uh, government, local governments are, um, rising to the top and moving down, just to understand what the picture looks like. And I think this is fairly typical of most, um, local governments. So we can go to the next slide there. So that's a little bit about our, our, our budget and the scenario we kind of find ourselves in. Uh, I don't have to educate the city council here on the roles of the county council, but the, the county council generally works like a city council does. Our main duties are our, their budget, of course, passing policy, legislation and land use. The reason that's important is because this year is a big year. I mentioned it on the onsite here that we're, for us, we're doing our, our first biannual budget, which is different and new for us, which is a whole, its own complication. But the land use piece, only every 10 years do we do these major comprehensive plan updates and we're in that year right now. And so there's a lot of, um, impactful decisions being made that citizens are really engaged with when we're talking about whether it's UGA expansions, infill, um, density increases, rezones for industrial, all those conversations happening now. And they sound really boring until it's your backyard or until it's your neighbors. And that's what we're in the current process of, and you all are going through that right now as well. And we'll talk about that in a second. So we can go to the next slide here. So I, I'm not going to read all these to you all, but I wanted to add at least some of the things that are relevant within those sectors that I think that the city of Bothell and the people who live in Bothell would be interested in seeing. So when it comes to the budget, we talked about the class comp study and what that means for the structural deficit. But the other thing I like to talk about when we talk about budget is our, our property tax as the main lever for revenue for us, uh, at the county and bank capacity, which really separates Snohomish County from the other two main, the other two larger counties in the state. King County, well, I'll talk a little bit about what bank capacity is. For those who don't know, there's a limit for local government as to how, uh, how much we can increase our property tax per year. We're limited at, to 1%. We can only increase our property taxes by 1% per year unless you skip that, uh, 1%, one year or many years, in the case of Snohomish County, those percentages get banked. So you can then in future years, grab that bank capacity and increase over that 1% as far as you have your bank capacity. Snohomish County, when I joined the council four years ago, had an eight and a half percent bank capacity total. King County, Snohomish County, or King County and Pierce County had zero, which means every year they take their 1%, uh, they treat it almost as a cost of living adjustment essentially for the county, as a cost of doing business, uh, with, uh, just the rising costs of everything in government. Snohomish County, for whatever reason, I wasn't on the council, was not taking the 1% to have this big bank capacity. That plays into the structural deficit conversation we're having. Um, and currently the county, since I've been on council, we've increased the, the, the property taxes by our 1% and we've dipped a little bit into the bank capacity as well. County Executive this year, if you all haven't seen yet, the budget that he rolled out and is now given to council to deliberate on is, uh, he's recommending taking the entire six and a half percent bank capacity plus the additional 1% each year. Um, and, uh, including some across-the-board cuts as well. Um, the reason I wanted to come and talk to you all about that is because, uh, we are, we're, I don't think many people pay that much attention to county government. And okay, that's fine. But there is some really big stuff, big decisions being, uh, being, that are going to be being made over the next two months in regard to our, uh, bank capacity, in regard to our cuts, just in the budget in general. And so I wanted to put it on everybody's radar to be paying attention to that, because it does have large implications countywide. Um, some of the housing, the policy stuff we're talking about, housing, childcare and public safety, those are just a few of the, uh, just the columns that I wanted to throw up there. But there's plenty of policy decisions that county is going, that the county council is going through, but these are where I've been focusing. Um, housing, affordable housing is, is, is vital to the economy here in Snohomish County. If we are going to be having 300,000 people, uh, moving here, but we are not building housing that is understanding and, 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 uh, planning based on those numbers, then we're doomed to fail. And I don't want to see the economy, if we fail in that way, what that does to, to us here in South Snohomish County specifically, where most of the growth is being concentrated. So, uh, finding creative ways to have more housing stock, ADUs, helping with permitting, tax exemptions, uh, some of the other things that we have done, uh, I think are one of the more important things that the county government can be doing right now. Childcare is something I'm really passionate about. Since I joined the state legislature before I even joined the county council, I've been invested in, uh, in childcare expansion because in Washington state, when you compare us to the rest of the states in the nation, we are behind, uh, as far as slots to new kids, basically is how they do the calculation. We are bottom 10 in the whole country as far as childcare slots, but in Snohomish County, in relation to the rest of Washington, we're the last as far as childcare desert. So it's particularly embarrassing to be representing Snohomish County and talking about childcare at the state level. Um, and so that's something that I've been trying to work on these, those bullet points are for policy proposals that I put forward in the time that I've been on council and happy to talk about those offline or, uh, at another time. And, and then in public safety. Uh, and I won't, I'm, I'm getting, I don't want to waste all your guys' time going through all these bullet points. So, uh, land use, comp plan, you all are going through that right now. You're probably feeling the same strain and stress. Uh, at the county level, it's a little bit different because we don't have the borders like cities do. We're not, we're not, we're basically the big puzzle with all the holes in it, the, that are filling in the spaces around where all the cities make up. So it's really complicated process for the county. We don't have these clean borders. And so conversations around UGA expansions to have more space for housing versus different types of stock and diversifying where we're doing infill development are really, um, they can get really heated and really passionate conversations. And they impact cities because when we do, we're talking about, um, potential upzoning, uh, just off 228th, just outside, where the, um, the gun range is, just outside of the city limits of Bothell, but absolutely impact the residents of Bothell and your city because they don't, people don't just avoid your streets once it becomes the city of Bothell and drive around you. You know, we're all living together in the same space. So those types of conversations, um, should be being had in, in coordination with the cities, with the surrounding cities. And that's part of why I'm here and what I want to start engaging with you all more on. Um, and then we're doing some really interesting stuff around tree canopy policy, uh, to maintain the nice green, beautiful Snohomish County that we've all come to love, um, while we grow. While we grow, we want to maintain that. Um, I, I just went through all that fast. I think the next slide is, we can go to the next slide. Yeah, okay. So I went through that really fast and it was all really high level. That was intentional because I don't want to clog up the meeting with some real nuanced details. Um, but I just also want to transition us into being more open and having a good relationship between the county and the city. I think, uh, the, like I said, the city residents versus the county residents don't distinguish when it's a pothole or when it's a park investment they need or their school doesn't have a sidewalk or whatever. They don't care whether it's city boundary or county boundary. And I'm sure you all have run into this during your day-to-day conversations with city residents, as I have with county residents. You know, it's the worst thing in the world as far as experience wise, for someone to call their elected representative, assuming that they're going to be able to get an answer or make movement on something that they're passionate about. They go through all this and then they realize, oh, I'm not actually in that jurisdiction. Let me punt you to somebody else. It's a much more seamless and also more efficient process if we all have a good relationship and we can help guide them. And you know, well, let me pass you off to this person who I know who's done great work on the county side and vice versa. So I really want to make sure that we have this open dialogue, open conversation. I want to be, uh, more proactive about coming and visiting maybe once a year or a couple of times a year, if you'll have me, uh, just to be able to present myself to answer some questions and hear from you all what your priorities are. Um, and see if the county can help invest in some projects and some things that you all are working. I know we're working on a, I think with, with, uh, we're working together, right? I, I forget who I was working with when it comes to the park project that we'll be investing in Cedar Grove. Um, but those kinds of conversations happening early on before the budget so that we can get ahead of investments that we'd like to make in the cities, uh, in the south county specifically where all this growth is happening. Um, so anyway, I'll stop talking now and I'll, I'll just, uh, stand to see if you guys have any questions or you want to talk about any of your priorities or things that I should be more focused on as your county representative.
Yeah, Councilmember Zorn.
I'll, I'll try to be, uh, fast. So yes, please, twice.
You're meeting. You can take as much time as you.
Well, well, I, I have to tell you, as you're going through all this, I'm, I'm thinking, do we ask that we just shelve everything till next week? So we can just spend the rest of the evening talking with Jared. But so, yes, please, twice a year would be fantastic if you have the bandwidth. Um, there are things that I would like to ask you about, like how are ADUs progressing in the county? Um, how does the county feel about city incorporating more area? But that's kind of a rabbit trail. I just want to say thank you. And those conversations can happen later. Um, this was very, very interesting. And yes, we frequently get somebody who complains about something and staff has to say, that's county. So you're right.
Yeah, I was just, I ju, I know, we could talk about the ADUs and the annexes if you want, or we can do that another time. Or you and I can grab coffee and talk about that. But I'll share a short story about my visit to an elementary school just outside of Bothell, Lockwood Elementary School. And they, if you know where that school is, they're like right on the border of King County, Snohomish County, city of Kenmore, city of Bothell, yet they're, you know, they're not in either city. And so they spent, it was, it was eight years, maybe 10 years. Uh, this is Angela, by the way. She's my legislative assistant who's joining us today. So that you all can see it, the other face that will be responding to if you reach out to the office. Uh, I think it's 10 years. They joined a council meeting last year and they said, they, it was PTA. And they were saying, there's a crosswalk scenario. We just need to investment in a raised crosswalk with a light crosswalk or with those flashy lights. It's a really dangerous street. They said they've been working for 10 years trying to figure out who can help them. They went to the state legislature, they went to the city of Kenmore, they went to the city of Bothell, they went to King County, they went to the school district. Like eventually stopped, after 10 years stumbled their way towards like showing up at a county council meeting. And I sat with them afterwards and said, so what's, what's going on? They told me the story. And within a year, we built the crosswalk and, and that was last week that I visited with them. But the moral of the story is that could have been done way quicker if we had all been coordinating a little bit better or if they, you know, if they understood better where they should go. But if we were coordinating and we had this relationship and they came to somebody and they were just pushed in the right direction, uh, and I think that's on us as elected representatives to just be more engaged and to be, uh, have better relationships with each other, be more intentional about coordinating jurisdictions, uh, because that's going to help us provide much better service to our communities.
You're absolutely right. And Lockwood is one of my favorite schools to substitute at. And I've been there when there's been the confusion of where do, where does a city, where does this school land? You know, where do, who do we talk to? So.
Cause they're attached to a middle school that's in King County.
Right.
They share the same property. So it's a middle school in King County. It's like, I'd be so confused. Have you seen the new crosswalk?
I haven't. But, but I'm very familiar with, you know, you can look at the playground from Kenmore Middle School. So yeah, they're, they're joined at the hip. So thank you for doing that for them.
Councilmember Kurt.
Thank you for coming to talk. Um, and, um, one day, maybe we'll put some Snohomish County photo, or we'll send you some nice Bothell Snohomish County photos for you to use in your.
I use the Udo Bothell because I went to Udo Bothell.
And that's awesome. And we love it. But we also have really cool spots in the city that are in Snohomish County, and you know them too. So, um, anyway, thanks for the presentation. Really good to hear from you. Um, I, uh, echo, you know, we, we have so many different, um, roles here at the city and different counties, but it's great to hear from Snohomish County. Um, and the three things that, um, I wanted to just kind of share briefly were, um, uh, the North Creek Trail that we just completed, section four in the city and that great partnership with the county, um, uh, Parks Department and, and County Council in continuing mobility for people outside of cars throughout Snohomish County, also specifically down here. Um, the North Creek Trail is a great thoroughfare and we're happy that there's that connection and hoping to kind of push that further and, and help everybody stay connected. So, um, we just did a ribbon cutting, I think, two weeks ago and we were right on the border, could see Snohomish County, could see Bothell, and everybody's happy. So that's one of those good things that, uh, you know, we like to, um, tout those things, but they, you know, it takes a lot of time. And, um, we're really grateful for the support that you've done, um, here in South County and, um, biking and, and walking and rolling. So thanks for that. Um, the other thing I'd be remiss, um, Councilmember Dodd isn't here and, um, she, um, likes to bring up all the time that a lot of the affordable housing stock that we have in our city is in the King County portion of the city. Um, and there's a, like an extreme lag, um, in terms of which side of the city is represented in our affordable housing talks. And so I'm hoping that maybe you can connect us with resources for Snohomish County, whether that's through HSCO or other, um, kind of partners that you've been curating relationships with, um, helping us to build that, um, equity in our own city between the line and help dissolve that line. Um, that would be really helpful. And the last thing I wanted to talk about was UGA. You hear it a lot. So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna bug you too much about it. But one of the things that we've talked about in our communications with residents and also just, um, owning up to the fact that we have, um, this land that we need to steward for the next generation. Um, and we have to bring up infrastructure to the level of the cities. Same thing in Mill Creek, same thing in other cities. Um, when we add additional UGA to eastern side of our city where there are working forests, where it's really rural, it's really expensive to bring that infrastructure up. And so, um, we're putting it into our comprehensive plan that we're trying to advocate against further UGA expansions in Bothell because we've seen so much already and we've seen kind of what it does, um, and the, the dangers of that for tree canopy, for, um, salmon, for transportation, for schools, like everything. So, um, I just want to continue to drive that home and, and say that, you know, um, we're grateful for the support from, um, um, Snohomish County and planning and, and learning about, you know, our, um, our numbers and trying to, um, uh, coordinate with our, um, outside of the city, our municipal urban growth boundary. But, um, when it comes to annexing and future annexations into what's now rural areas, it's a really difficult conversation to have. So, yeah.
There, there, the closest UGA expansion that's even in consideration that I can think of is up in the southwest UGA by like 43rd Ave. Is there one closer right outside of the city?
I think there's one on 39th. Um, and so, yeah, that was a, it was talked about a transfer from Darrington.
Right.
To, so I'm not, yeah, the swap. So I'm not sure what the status of those conversations are, but we can grab coffee whenever too.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks.
Councilmember Aldox.
Thank you for being here. Um, and thank you for the presentation. Um, I really appreciate Councilmember Kurt, especially bringing up, um, some of the areas that, that there are potential collaborations between the county and the city of Bothell. Um, I want to add a couple more, um, to that. And, uh, but first I want to ask, have you had a chance to get a presentation on Bothell's 2040 vision? I wonder if that's something that, I'm looking at our city manager, if that's something that, um, might be beneficial for, uh, Councilmember Meade. Um, we have this lovely vision document that we put together, um, council did to get together. And there are certain, there are certain items in there that relate more to Snohomish County. Um, in particular, um, the goal to preserve Shelton View Forest. And that is probably a topic that your staff has been working on. And we really do appreciate you collaborating with, uh, Department of Natural Resources and the city to, um, to help us achieve that goal because, um, our community has very clearly made it known to us that Shelton View should be preserved. Um, so thank you, thank you for your work on that. I, you know, wish you all the best as you continue working on that because it's going to be a complicated process.
And your, your state Senator Derek Stanford has been really helpful in advocating for that as well, because it's going to take kind of an all hands on deck for the Shelton View specific, because it's, it's a, it's kind of comes down to money at the end of the day, which is unfortunate. But there's state dollars, there's county dollars and there's city dollars that can be pooled to do conservation like that. And sometimes it does take an effort like that. So I'm there. I, I want it to happen. The county doesn't have enough money to do it by itself. So that's why I want to say also that Senator Stanford has been great. And if you're listening, Senator Stanford.
Thank, thank you for saying that. I really do appreciate it. Um, and then, um, in addition to some of the, you know, the, the growing pains, uh, around the, the urban growth boundary, um, one topic, and I, I feel bad that both of our, um, we call them our Snohomies, um, our council members who live in Snohomish County are not present.
All of you.
For your presentation.
Yeah.
The rest of us are. So both, uh, Councilmember Dodd and Councilmember Minky are not present for your presentation when I'm so sorry that they're missing it. Um, so we're going to try to hold it down and represent as best as we can, um, and communicate what, um, the concerns that they might have brought up, uh, tonight. And so the last concern I'd bring up to you is as we look at the, um, the spread of parks in the city of Bothell, there are fewer parks in Snohomish County side. And so those are the types of partnerships. And I'm really glad to hear the collaboration on, on Cedar Grove. But, um, definitely one of the areas that we're looking to, um, improve our park system is through acquisition of land in Snohomish County and, um, and building more parks to better serve, uh, that section of the city.
I just got, I appreciate you saying that. I just got a presentation today. It might have been yesterday. The days are the same. I have a one month old at home, so they all mesh together. I think it was today. Just got a presentation about a new fee structure for development impact fees, developer impact fees for parks specifically. Um, and they mentioned, well, I mentioned, South County as the fastest growing portion of the fastest growing county in the state and where all the investment needs to happen. And I, and so the, the anyways, the park impact or the, yeah, the park development impact fees are potentially, they're on, they're for consideration, but I'm supportive of that, to increase these fees so that we have more dollars. We're way behind in our impact fees. Uh, we're way behind King County and, and Pierce County, which we often compare ourselves to when it comes to what we ask developers to pay, um, to school impact fees, to transportation impact fees and to park impact fees. And so we're working to fix that. And that should open up a new pool of dollars in addition to the conservation futures dollars that we have, which is the pot of money that I thought made most sense for Shelton View, but also for other part, other parks, uh, investments. So yeah, I appreciate you saying that. And that's something that I'm absolutely paying attention to.
Great. Thank you. And, and like I said, if you would like a presentation, I'm totally volunteering, that we should share 2040 vision with you so that we could figure out where to collaborate and work together.
Right.
We'll certainly follow up.
We'll share an hour long Zoom.
As a Snohomish County resident who is here, I'll take care of that.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, uh, councilmembers for being here. It's, uh, I, I was hoping we'd be using, I don't know if you noticed, we have this table to do.
Beautiful.
Or the tables. It's a setup for study sessions. It's a setup for study sessions so we can have conversations like you suggested earlier. So yes, I am all for us getting together a lot more frequently than even once a year so that we can exchange. As the growth happens, there has to be a lot of collaboration and coordination. So I completely agree with you on this one.
Yeah, I would love, the work sessions are my favorite because even though we're still all on the record, it just feels more conversational and you can really like dig in and staff can give data points and we can pass around papers and all that. Here it's, you know, it's more strict and to the point. So yeah, I would love that if we want to set something up.
Yeah, for, for sure. I don't know who's, I can do it.
City clerk all over.
They'll take care. She was, just got voluntold. The thing that caught my attention is your bank capacity, which I, that, that concept is new. I don't, I don't even know if we ever used this bank capacity concept over here at, at the city, but given the.
I would imagine you all probably took your 1% every year.
No, no, we do take it every year.
We have some bank capacity as well.
We do.
There you go. Now you know there's a new pot of money.
Really? Okay. So, so the question I have though, we have to be very careful. I mean, with, yeah, great power comes great responsibility. So that, because you, you mentioned that executive with his, in his budget proposal, using up all the 6.5% plus the 1%, is that a one-time thing or is it going to be spread out over years, over a few?
So the specific proposal that just, that the executive just rolled out two weeks ago, we, I mentioned that we were doing our first biannual budget ever. So normally we, previously we used to just do one year over one year. This year we're doing a biannual budget. So in that biannual budget, he's proposing that for the 20, year 2025 and year 2026, we take our 1%, but in year 25, we, we take the full six and a half. So we do seven and a half. So property taxes would go up seven and a half percent next year and then 1% next year. We have no bank capacity left and then every year from then on, we'd have the opportunity to do 1% or no percent. I think I answered your question.
Yes, you did.
Basically wants to take it all at the very beginning.
On the, yeah, on the, the key of, in one year instead of amortizing it over the.
Yeah.
So the question now then is how, and you don't, I mean, we don't have to answer the question. It's just that the question that comes to mind is like, how are we managing it with the residents, right? The owners of the properties who are going to have to pay those taxes.
That's the question because it's, that'd be the biggest property tax increase that the county has seen in like two decades as far as in a, in a single year. And so that's the conversation that's being had. That's certainly something that I'm considering is, well, we have this, I mentioned that we have this reserve fund and generally I, I went past the slide quickly, but most budgets, I'm assuming you guys have some type of, the threshold that you'd like to keep your reserve at. Usually it's between eight and 15%. Snohomish County, we set a 14% goal to have our reserves at 14%. Right now we're above 20% because we have a lot of money because we've done some one time, we did a one-time sale of Cathcart property, some ARPA dollars, and so we put money in these reserves. So we, we are well above the, the savings account or rainy day fund, if you will, but we're digging into that every year that we have the structural deficit. My point is, or my question at least is, if I'm, if we're talking about increasing property taxes at, at a, at a significant level, not just our 1% each year, is it, are we really at that point in our budget where we need to like break the emergency glass and take it all, the whole, the whole bank capacity and do cuts? And so that's my job as a council member now and your job as a coun, as council members to look at your budget and to really like get into the nitty gritty, get a little deeper, get a few inches deeper to figure out like where are we and what is the trajectory? There's a few factors as far as where our budgets are for the city of Bothell, but for county, Snohomish County as well. Our sales tax revenues have been down historically. We overhit the, the projections and that's been the case for 15 years. And that's mostly the case because good budgeting would be under projecting and being happy when more money comes. This year we actually were under for the first time in a long time. And it's because we miss, I think, not just our county, just generally, the economics would say inflation, okay, it's getting a little bit better, pandemic's ending, businesses are coming back, we should be increasing sales revenue. That didn't happen at the scale that most governments assumed it would happen. So our sales tax revenue is less than it should be and should be more next year. We also have a public safety sales tax on the ballot this year, which I'm not supposed to talk about, I know, on this dais, but that is a calculation as far as what we're looking at. In November, we could have $26 million in additional public safety sales tax, or public safety dollars or not. And so really where are we at and do we need to do, go that far yet is kind of part of what I'm thinking because it is, it will, there would be sticker shock for some residents. Depending on the value of your home, six and a half percent or seven and a half percent in that one year could amount to a hundred plus dollars on your property tax bill, or it could amount to like $14 on your property tax bill, your annual bill. But it's still a big number and it's just, if, you shouldn't take that lightly. Like you said, Spider-Man, you know, with great power comes great responsibility. You have to think about those things too. It's not just, hey, our budget sucks and we have a big bank capacity, why not just take it all? Anyway, we can get more.
Yeah, because then the next question is, is that going to solve the long-term structural deficit problem?
The worst part about it is their calculations, it wouldn't. Their, the calculations that I've seen is if we take six and a half percent, 1% equates to about, I'm getting really wonky, I'm taking up all your time, and so cut me off, Mayor, when you have to. 1% is about a million dollars for Snohomish County, 1% property tax increase. Our structural deficit is like $14 million this year. Next year it could be 13, could be 15, but it's, you know, above $10 million a year. So if we're talking about six and a half percent or seven and a half percent, seven and a half million dollars, we're still at six and a half. I'm trying to do math on the, it's not a good idea, but six and a half million dollars still in our deficit. And then if we cut by say one and a half percent, which is what the executive's budget proposal was, flat cuts one and a half percent, all departments, we're still, we're still at like a negative 3 million, negative 4 million. So even based on their own projections, like that's still not going to get us there. So there's, something else has to happen, something, we have to find another way as well, other things to do. And there are other options, but there, your revenue options are limited. You got sales tax, you got property tax. You can't raise fees to the point where it actually touches the budget in a real way. And then there's reducing expenditures. And so I think all things should be on the table in a scenario like this for Snohomish County. I don't know where Bothell's, but for Snohomish County's budget, I think everything has to be on the table. We shouldn't have anything off limits and we should just be able to brainstorm openly about, first, being real with our constituents, where we're at, and then what are the legitimate options and figure out what people really want in their community because it will be a reduction in services if you don't want to increase your, your taxes. But that's a way longer conversation. That, I already went further and deeper than I should have gone just now, so.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. That's why conversations on this, it will be like for four hours.
Councilmember Dodd, I see that you're here and I want to acknowledge you. Everybody else except me has had a chance to ask Councilmember Mead about his presentation. I don't know if you have anything off the top of your head you want to ask or not, but you're welcome.
I've been told you're the only Snohomish County person on the dais right now.
It's true, and I apologize that you were competing with curriculum night at my son's school.
I get it.
Which was great. I, Councilmember Aldrich showed me some of the questions that had been asked. I think I would just like to put a bug in your ear around growth. I think if you ever want to take a tour of my part of Bothell, I would love to show you kind of when unincorporated becomes incorporated and sort of the problems you inherit. I know you know similar from Mill Creek and across your district, but in some of the countywide gatherings that we have as councilmembers, it's, it's alarming to me to see this thought that we should push the growth out into unincorporated areas where we have just, just less bandwidth, right, than, than incorporated cities. And I don't want to create more unincorporated situations for cities to later battle. It's just kind of shoving it down the line to me. And so anything you can do to help us encourage all of our colleagues across the county to, to take that on, you know, wholeheartedly would be great.
That's exactly, I was, you hit it on the head. Bothell has been really good, maybe, I'm not going to say the only city because there's three other cities in the district. Bothell's been a, a very good city when it comes to what I consider a city's obligations, which is to grow, like to, to start incorporating as things grow, to annex more space. Because counties, when the GMA, again, I don't want to go down this rabbit hole and take up more of your guys' time, but when the GMA was established in 1991, it, there was this assumption that of course cities are going to grow. And so when they put these numbers upon us and said cities are going to grow by X, counties are going to grow by X, and you need to have housing that recognizes those numbers, there was this assumption that cities were all going to be annexing and it was going to be like, oh, this is going to work out perfect. 30 years later, 35 years later, nobody's taken the time to like look back and say, did this actually work? Because the intentions, they, Bothell excluded, cities are not just like pulling in as much space as they can and growing and taking all this residential and then developing. But you, you reference, you know, you have the resources in the city level to put sidewalks, to do the sidewalk gutter systems, to put in all the infrastructure, crosswalks, all the things, counties don't. And they were never intended to, at least when the GMA was established. Counties were not supposed to, we have to service, our sheriff's department has to service people outside of the city of Sultan, all the way down south, Southwest UGA down here, you know, right over the border that you're talking about. And so that's not possible with the resources we have, but we're still growing and we're still urbanizing inside the UGA but outside of city limits, which is putting a ton of strain on county government. And then there's all this pressure because of that, because we have growth targets too that the state is telling us, you don't get access to state funding for transposed stuff or anything if you don't hit these targets and plan for these targets. Well then what are we supposed to do? Infill redevelopment or expand the UGA for more space? So that's where the pressure is coming from and the pressure would be relieved if more cities took in more space and therefore took in more of the growth target numbers. But I digress. Thank you for pointing that out. It's a huge frustration of mine.
No, I really appreciate it and I think a, a shared frustration because it's, it's hard to catch up when you come in from behind as a city. And then I think the other thing is I'll just put in a, a good word for the Shelton View Forest as well. That's a, that's a great resource and would love to see it preserved as, as we look at growth. I think those, those natural spaces that are still truly like wild are even more precious. So, but I know you know and I appreciate you being here. Thank you.
All right. I have one question that hasn't been addressed by my colleagues up here. And Councilmember Dodd hit on it a little bit, when we, when we do incorporate areas, we take on areas with a lot fewer parks, with a lot fewer sidewalks, things like that. Is there any conversation at the county, so we have this municipal urban growth area that we will eventually, I'm sure, inherit at some point in time? Is there any conversation at the county about adding those kinds of facilities or adding parks or something like that into, or at least looking for future opportunities, given the budget challenges this year? I don't imagine there's a lot of extra capital dollars, but are there conversations around adding parks in those unincorporated urban growth areas?
So I would say not at the level of detail that they, if they are happening, it's not nowhere near the level of detail that it should. It should be in coordination with cities like Bothell, maybe not Bothell specifically because you guys are like, you, like I said, been good actors as far as expansions, but other cities like Mill Creek and Linwood, not to call out the city that I was born and raised in, but the city of Mill Creek and Linwood, there's a space, Martha Lake, on 164th. That is not supposed to be county. Why is that county? It makes no sense that that is Snohomish County. That should be in the city of either Linwood or Mill Creek. But political history, for whatever, I know the reason and I won't talk about it here, but the political history made it so that now nobody's annexing it and it's sitting as unincorporated Snohomish County. The design standards, the investment for transportation infrastructure, whether it's a community transit route or the planning around infill upzoning for sap, for the sound transit that's coming up or has come up now, all those things should not be happening at the county level. We don't have the resources to do it adequately. So you get this like hodgepodge patchwork of development here as we upzone over here and then you get a development over here the next year and it, they don't look the same, they're not coordinated, they don't have even roads that match. And so you get these like ugly design standards and that makes it more, less livable, less marketable, et cetera. Whereas if one of the cities brought that space in, they'd be able to plan for it better and it'd be in conjunction with all of their 20-year, 2020 vision, 2024 is what you guys call it, 2020, 2040.
2040.
Right? All their vision, all, all that stuff could be packaged into the same planned community, whereas it's not now. So my point is, we should be doing that at a way deeper level. We should be having conversations with like, hey, Mill Creek, what could we do on the county side to set up that space so that maybe it's more enticing for you to want to annex it? The state has done some stuff with tax incentives, sales tax incentives. It didn't go nearly far enough, so none of the cities have actually taken advantage of the scenario to, basically the policy was you annex something in and you can, you can keep more of the, more of the chunk of property tax that normally would go to the state, you can keep more, trying to incentivize, but it just wasn't enough. And so cities didn't care and it wasn't, they weren't annexing or utilizing that tool. We need to do way more. The county needs to do stuff like that. When you and I have had this conversation offline about what would it take to get more? And it, what it comes down to is like, why would you want to annex something in that has crappy services, doesn't have the, it's, it's county level stuff that you're then having to upgrade and get in jive with the rest of the city. But if that could be, some of that stuff could be done on the front end in the spaces like you brought up the Mooga. If the county could do some things on the front end that could make it more attractive for a city to want to bring that in, maybe we'd see annexations more. And so, I don't know, because then you're also asking the county to invest millions of dollars in a product that they're not going to then have. So like, that's a tough sell. So those conversations should be happening in like the work session type scenarios where it's like, that space clearly is in your Mooga, clearly it should be you. What should we do over the next three years in our next plan or our CIPs to get it to a point where you're willing to do it? So it should happen and it's not.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you very much. Really appreciate you coming out. Just want to echo the thought that like, we appreciate it, we enjoy having you here and we enjoy catching up. And clearly you can see by the conversation we've had that I'm pretty sure the council enjoyed it as well. So just wanted to say thanks. Keep doing what you're doing. We really appreciate you.
Thank you. Thanks for the time and yeah, well, let's do this again.
All right.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Mayor, next Sunday, in the report section is we do have a, a staff briefing related to a, a letter of support that was requested for, for mayoral signature. And as council will know, and when we get those requests, the first thing that we do as staff is look to existing policy to see if the council has given direction to support such things. If it's not clear, we, and we have time, ideally, we come to you. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to our assistant city manager, Becky Range, who's joining us online tonight to walk us through a letter of support that was presented and to see if the council would like to consider signing on. With that, I'll turn it over to Becky.
Thank you, City Manager Stanner. So Mayor and councilmembers, I do just want to give a quick staff update tonight to make sure that we are headed in the right direction. PSC is currently going through a regulatory process for a rate increase. And they will be having a public hearing at the Washington State UTC on October 9th. As part of that process and their request for feedback, the city of Bothell has been asked to sign a regional letter that's been drafted, that started with human services, work and research. Actually with our neighboring city, the city of Kenmore. And so we applaud them for a lot of research that they've done to get this started. But we've been asked to sign this letter for really two reasons. What we'd like to do is ask both UTC and PSC to take a really close look at their low-income discount program. We applaud PSC for putting in a low-income discount program. We think that's amazing. But we would like for them to take a closer look at it in two areas. Right now, the program utilizes federal poverty level as the method of criteria for the discounts and the calculations. And we would like to encourage them to take a look at that and potentially use AMI instead. And we'd also like for them to take a closer look at how they do their percentage discount calculations for people in our area that make 50% of the AMI or below. So there is a letter in your package that has a lot more of the detail and the numbers. But if I could just quickly summarize, the program was put in place and PSC advertised that if you were struggling and you met a certain poverty level, you could potentially get five to up to 45% off of your bill. But the way the calculations are working in practice is that the most poor and the most struggling of our residents are only getting 5% off of their discount and so off of their bill. So what we'd like to do is encourage PSC to take a closer look at that and hopefully update those calculations. We have also heard in our community during our needs assessment that using the federal poverty level is sometimes problematic. We're an area with a really high cost of living, so sometimes it makes more sense to use AMI. We also consulted with NUSA, who do support this letter as well. So we'd just like to know if we're headed in the right direction, and if you would also like to sign on to this letter, or if you have any questions for me.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Thank you for bringing this to us and explaining the letter. I absolutely support the idea that we should be working off of AMI instead of the federal poverty level. And for the reasons that you said, I'm not sure I'm exactly following the way that the percentage discounts work. I'm on page 11 of our agenda, and it looks like it's saying somebody making 2.7% of AMI would get the 45% discount. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
I don't, well, I think it's saying that you would have to make only $243 a month to even be considered to be even eligible for the 45% discount. But in practice, that's not actually even happening. You're looking at the chart on the second.
I am, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think when we're asking them to take a closer look at 50% AMI and below, that would increase the number of people that would actually be receiving the discounts. Right now, if you look at that chart, we're only, most people in our area that are making 30% of AMI are only qualifying for the 5%. So.
Okay. And it looks like from this letter that it's all, that the city of Kenmore also sent a letter, a similar letter to them. Is that correct?
Yeah, actually, the city of Kenmore, they're the city, Tambi, over there, they're the city that actually started the draft letter and have shared it with multiple cities in our region. And I did chat with Tambi a little bit. There's multiple cities that have already agreed to sign on to this letter. But they did the bulk of their research here, and we've been working with them to polish up this letter.
Nice. And so then you don't, do you need a motion tonight to approve this letter or just recommendation?
I think just verbal direction that you are in general support of this ask.
Okay. Then I can say yes, I am in general support of this, of the letter. Thank you.
Councilwoman Zorn.
Real quickly, when I was looking at it this weekend, I thought, this is a no-brainer. So yes, it has my support as well. And please pass on our thanks to Tambi for this. It's help in a meaningful way that hasn't existed before. So thank you.
Councilmember Kurt.
Thanks. I'll just echo those comments. I think it's really reasonable. I'm also looking at our draft comprehensive plan under the utilities goal UT2. And hopefully, that will provide direction in the future that this sort of equitable distribution and equitable rate structure is something that we would support in the future, just across the board, whether it's from Snohomish County PUD or PSC or other utility providers. Thanks.
Debbie, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna, I agree with my colleagues here. I just wanted to ask a follow-up question. In addition to signing the letter, is there going to be an effort, oh, which camera? That camera? It's like, I feel like I'm on TV. I feel like I'm on TV. Do we, is there going to be a follow-up to actually, like a mobilization to actually make something happen, or is it just, here's a letter, PSC, do with it as you wish?
That's a great question. I'll have to find out a little bit more information on that. I know they would like to present it and provide it for the public hearing, but I'm not sure if there's actually kind of a movement to get folks to go and support, but I can sure check on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's a no-brainer, and I don't have any other comment that hasn't already been said. So, but I appreciate the effort. Thank you, Becky. Good to see you.
Thank you for your time.
Oh, Councilmember Dodd.
I also like the letter. A little more anticlimactic than the mayor's, but also let us know if we can get out and advocate further if that opportunity comes up. I think we have a lot of people who enjoy trying to do good things. So it seems like we'd have a crowd we could source. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
I want to do a quick time check. Do we want to move forward with the third and final report, or do we need to take a quick recess?
All right. It is 7:14. We are going to take a 16-minute break, 7:15 now, and we'll be back at 7:30. All right, we're back, and we are still on the city manager reports.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I'll call on myself. We do have an update tonight. Wanted to provide an update to the council and the community on the negotiations of Lot P South purchase and sale agreement. This has been something that we've had planned since July, and we set in motion with getting direction from the city council with the approval of the letter of intent, knowing that there would be a 90-day window. So wanted to make sure to come at the beginning of October and give an update of where things are at. Tonight, there will be no action being sought. So again, this is really just informational only about the proceedings and the negotiations. But it's also an opportunity of being able to dive a little bit into some of the frequently asked questions that we've received. And as council is aware, we've had a frequently asked questions page up about this process, but we are also getting questions, which always makes FAQs a little bit easier to populate. So we'll talk about some of the main themes that have been coming up in that. And I will also just note that the page has been updated on our site. So if anybody does have any questions tonight, following tonight, or into the future, going to the city website and searching for Lot P, we'll get them there. First things first, always like to reorient to make sure that we know if anybody is watching along, and this is new to them of what we're talking about. Not everybody carries around the alphabet of lots in their mind. So marked with a star is Lot P South, what we're discussing tonight. It is just a couple blocks off from City Hall. And again, this has been a conversation that's been going on for a few years now around looking at designating that property as potential for an affordable housing project. And back in May of 2022, the council gave the first direction specifically to begin negotiations with the Bothell United Methodist Church for affordable housing at that site. So moving forward, one of the things that we've been hearing, a couple of the themes of what we've been hearing, I think there's been some questions about why, what's the why behind this? So there is a, again, a focus and council direction on looking at providing affordable housing. I will also note that tonight, we are also talking about the comprehensive plan update specifically around land use and housing. And so on page 110 of tonight's packet is actually the chart of housing units, of which Bothell is expected to be able to accommodate for affordable housing by 2044. And you'll see if you refer to that around what the conversation of where we started with the LOI is to have affordable housing of at least 80% AMI. And on that table, you'll see there are a few thousand units that are expected to be developed in Bothell. And so we're talking about 200 units for this project. One of the things that I really wanted to take a pause on tonight and make sure that it's clear for everyone, for council, for the community, and just really reorient around is that I think as we've been having conversations about these negotiations, a lot of the timeline discussion has been looking at where did we start and where did we get to today. So conversations of where things started in 2018 all the way through 2024. For tonight, what I want to do is take a pause and put it in context of where we're at in context of moving forward. So in July of this year, the council did give approval for the city manager to enter into an agreement of a letter of intent. Again, a letter of intent is simply to put the parameters together that leads towards something. And in this case, it was a purchase and sale agreement. Within the letter of intent, that negotiation, then, there was a kind of a bias for action, because we do have a long history of these conversations, but looking at within 90 days, trying to close on a purchase and sale agreement. That is the phase that we're currently in. One of the things that I want to really put into perspective on that, though, too, is that I think that when, it's easy to understand that when people hear the term purchase and sale, we think about what are the experiences that we have in our lives. And typically, that's going to be something around if we're buying something and there's a sale, it's around something that we're buying for ourselves, a car or a home. And at the time of a purchase and sale, you take possession of that item. What I want to make clear is that in this case of what we're discussing in terms of the negotiation and the specific language around contribution of land towards a project, is that it's just that, is that the purchase and sale agreement actually specifies the terms of what needs to happen before a transaction of property occurs. So while the direction that staff has received from council is to negotiate a purchase and sale agreement and to come back with one for council to consider, which could either be approved or renegotiated or not approved, if it is approved, there is still not a transaction of land at that time. But what there is, is in the next box, is a continued journey of up to five years based on the LOI. We have not come back with a purchase and sale agreement with the timeline agreeing to. But again, the negotiation in good faith has been around the terms that are in the letter of intent will inform the terms of the purchase and sale agreement. And in that, what we were looking at is that there would be a set of requirements for both the city and for the Bothell United Methodist Church as the purchaser to satisfy within a period of five years. So I want to zoom in a little bit then on what are those project requirements that take up for five years? And again, these are all specified in the letter of intent. But I've noted in some of the conversations that I've had with members of the community that it hasn't been as easy to follow. So what I want to mention first of all is that while there are four boxes on a screen here, these are not necessarily sequential. There's some natural sequence to these, but it's not a this happens and this happens cascading effect with the timeline of when dates have to be hit. But from the point of if we do reach mutual agreed purchase and sale, the main things that will need to take place before any property actually is transacted from the city to the Bothell United Methodist Church towards a project is there has to be a project. And right now, there's an idea and a vision. So we're not there yet. So what would need to take place is, first of all, the Bothell United Methodist Church, along with their partners in Bridge Housing, are going to be looking at getting funding secured. And that's one of the requirements that the city would put into place. We're not going to transact any land until there's sufficient funding to move forward the project. This isn't a situation of where the foundation would be built, and then there's no money and nothing happens. So the city will be watching for, is their funding secured for the project? And that's a lot of work. That's part of why there's five years on this. And I know there's optimism from the church and their development of hoping that it'll take less than five years. But we want to also recognize that there's a lot of competition for funding for affordable housing in our state right now. And so we want to give ample time for that. The second thing is, is this is some work that both Bothell United, as well as Bridge, will want to do for their own due diligence, and that is to inspect and really check out the site. So we are talking about land. We are talking about land that was recently contaminated. That is why the city had acquired this property in the first place, was it for environmental remediation and redevelopment. And so they are within the terms of the letter of intent, as well as what would be coming in the purchase and sale agreement, will be outlined, some of the steps that they will want to take in terms of monitoring to make sure that, again, while we have a clean bill of health from the Department of Ecology, they're going to want to test and confirm that. They're going to want to check out in terms of what can be built there, what will the ground accommodate, because it is land that has had dirt removed and dirt brought in. And so there's a number of things that they're going to need to test to make sure that, is this really the site? The concept of the site and the location and some of the amenities that are in their surroundings make sense, but they'll really want to make sure, is this the site that will also accommodate the project that we intend to build? So the vision becoming a reality. And then the next two things is where the city then, we have a dual role in this. Again, if there's, the council has expressed an interest in contributing land towards this project, but the city is still the city. And so we do have a regulatory role when it comes to land use and permits and making sure that the project then conforms to what is in land use code and is a permissible project. And so there's been some of the questions that we've heard from the community and have been submitted in writing and in conversations and in public meetings, wondering about where have been the notifications, like they sometimes see for other projects, or where has been the notice boards posted at the sites? And really, the answer to that is, is that we're probably three years away from seeing some of those things. Because while there is the discussion about, again, contributing the land in the future, all the conditions need to be met. So before the city would transmit the land or contribute the land towards this project, not only does it have to be funded, not only does the land have to be able to accommodate what's going to be built, but then the land use code and the permitting requirements will be a factor. And so the project, probably through Bridge and the partnership with Bothell United Methodist Church, they will come in for permits. They will come in with site design. And through that process, as noted in your packet tonight, there are a number of steps then that will take place in terms of, that is where the notice of application will be mailed to any owners or occupants of property within 500 feet of the site, which is what happens throughout the entire community when there is a project like this that's being developed. There'll be a notice board placed on the property. There'll be publication in the Seattle Times. Usually, it's in the sports page. It's in the small print. Take a look. And then, as well as preparation of impact statements, there will be required comment periods, potential appeal periods. So all of those things that people are wondering, why hasn't that happened yet? The reason for that is, is that there isn't a project that's actually in process at those stages. So again, Bothell United Methodist Church, they're in a position where they are casting a vision for the project that they intend to build. That vision, though, there's a number of steps in terms of financing, of accommodating the land, and then having to go through to make sure that it can be permitted and it is appropriate for the site. Those are things that then have to be approved by staff according to the code. So when there's concerns about, well, about things like parking levels, or is this going to be consistent with usage in downtown, the code will answer those questions. And the community will have the opportunity to engage in those discussions like they do on any other project. One thing that I'll just note with that then is, is that while there are different ideas or designs of what this project may or may not be, the reassurance I would offer is that really in terms of what our land use and our code would require or would allow for construction on that site now, if we were to, if somebody was to come in and take control of that property or if the city never owned it, chances are, if we look at the neighboring properties, what we see on the neighboring properties is an apartment building. And at the end of the day, what will visually be existing on this property, if everything comes together, will be an apartment building. So that's what the, again, that's where the code comes in. So wanted to really highlight that of, again, some of the things that people are concerned about or wondering, why haven't we seen this? That in the timeline, this is work that will be taking place in the future, most likely closer to 2029 than 2024. With that, then, one of the intents of tonight was to provide an update both to the council and the community of what's coming next. And so as we calculated out 90 days, the required 90 days from the LOI from the signatory, we can calculate it from either where the council gave authorization or from where the church accepted it. But either way, then, we're looking at it in an October date. And so where we're at right now, though, is that the negotiations are still ongoing. And from all intents, it sounds like things are close of coming together. Again, the LOI, or the letter of intent, really sets the foundation for the types of terms that we have to agree to that would be in the purchase and sale agreement. So based on that, there's a presumption there that what council will be presented when this all comes together shouldn't be a surprise, because you've seen it played out in the LOI. That being said, there isn't, there will not be an agreement ready to come to you next week, which is where we were holding time for consideration of an LOI. And so in communications with Bridge and the Bothell United Methodist Church, we've mutually discussed considering an extension of that 90-day exclusive deadline. And where I'll note for that is, is where I think the benefit of an extension there is, is that, again, the LOI terms really specify what to expect. And again, in negotiating in good faith, should provide a consistency of no surprises. And I think that's always an important place to come from. While a purchase and sale agreement could be negotiated without a letter of intent, so if the letter of intent expires, for example, or in some cases, there would never be a letter of intent, we could still be in negotiations for a purchase and sale agreement if the council wanted to proceed. But I think extending the LOI does create that, the expectation of what we'll see coming back. So our intent for next week, then, is I intend to come back with a resolution that would extend that negotiation period for a set of time, and we'll have more information there. Again, I would just note that it would be, we'll have a recommendation, but I wouldn't anticipate recommending to do that. I think something the council should be considering, though, is how long. So what I would say is, again, we picked 90 days, because I think at a certain point, we want to, all parties are wanting to make sure, can we get to a place where there's agreement? And we'd rather know that sooner than later. So while an extension of a month or two months, I think, makes a lot of sense, at a certain point, there's always within the realm of consideration for the council of knowing that the priority here is development of an affordable housing project. If for some reason, we can't come to an agreement on a purchase and sale agreement, you may at some point decide an extension's not appropriate. I don't think that's now, right? I think the difference between 90 days and 120 days or 140 days is not significant. And I do think that- And I do think that all of the negotiations, again, have been going according to what was directed by council, what has been contemplated for this project. And again, in good faith, I think it would make sense to extend that deadline. So with that, I'm going to, I'm going to pause on the presentation, take any questions, but just want to reiterate then, the anticipated next step would be coming back next week with a proposed extension to the LOI deadline past what is currently the middle of October. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Thank you for walking us through, not just where we are currently, but some of the history of it, too. And I really just want to say that I appreciate the staff that put together the FAQ page on, on the website. It's, it's extensively linked to past, like agendas and, and minutes from those meetings. And I, I think that's a really great way for the public to kind of look through and trace this project over time. My, I don't know how burning of a question it is, but my only question is, has, like, who is, who is requesting this extension? Is it coming, has the church formally requested an extension? Or is this a suggestion of the city that the city is requesting? And I'd like to understand sort of the origins of that.
Yeah, I, I would, I would say it's a mutually pursued option. In a conversation last week, being cognizant of the date coming up, it was discussed of, do we think that there's adequate time, knowing that, I want to make sure that, for, for what I need to bring to council, I need to be able to have time to adequately review any document that's going to be presented to council, so I can give you a recommendation, see if it's ready or not, or if it's something where I feel like it's not consistent with the direction that I understand from you, that sort of a thing. And so in that discussion, it was, it was offered to send a request. So today I did receive a written request for considering an extension. And what we need to figure out then is, is that, what's the, what's the timeline of that extension? I think there's, it's a Goldilocks principle of, we don't want to be too short and start daisy chaining a series of, of extensions. But there's also mentioned one of those four buckets that needs to be done. One of them is securing a funding. And I am well aware, too, that there are, are funding rounds at the state level and, as well as more locally with the Arch Coalition that the city is a member of, that having site control is a big factor that's figured into of whether or not funding will be allocated towards projects. So the sooner that a purchase and sale agreement can be reached, it helps this project be competitive for outside funding sources, and we want to be respectful of that need, too.
Yeah, thank you for the additional explanation. I guess I, like, of the kind of suggestions that I've heard, I'd be leaning more towards the 60-day extension. I think that brings us almost to the end of the year. Is that reasonable?
Yeah, and I, I don't know that we'll need to specifically have a date, a, a number of days, but I think we'll, we'll look at both the, the practical need of wanting to come to this conclusion, with also, I think there's a reality of balancing. Councilmember Mead did a great job of reminding all of us of all of the things that are coming before you before the end of the year. We have budget conversations on our own, as well as comprehensive plans. So making sure that we look at how we can bring this together and make sure that there's also adequate time for discussion for the council, and as well as keeping the community informed of what's coming next.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager. This is an exciting project. As you mentioned at the top of your talk, there is a need, there's a mandate to reach a certain number of units by 2040 or in 20 years, and then we need, you know, and this is an opportunity that presented itself right now, so I feel like we need, it'll get us going. I think last time you talked about this, you mentioned 400% or something increase in affordable housing units. If I'm making up numbers, let me know, you know? So, but it is a big, big increase from what we have today, because the only one really that's affordable is the, the SAMA one right on 522. Some questions I have are, are related to this, so that can help me suggest, or give you an answer to your question about the timing, is, the first one is, why haven't we been able to get to an agreement in the next 90 days? And if we extend, do we know we're going to reach an agreement?
And I'll, I'd be happy to, to dive into that a little bit more next week, when we come into a timeline. Again, I don't, we don't have the timeline nailed down of what we want to expect, but I think we'll have conversations about what is the sequencing of, what are the things that need to be done? So then when, when would the city need to have a proposed agreement in our hands? How do we have opportunity to go back and forth if there is any need for that? I don't think there's any, I don't think there's any reason other than probably bandwidth, a lot of, a lot of work to be done on affordable housing, and also making sure to get it right so far in terms of, of why. And 90 days isn't very long. I will also acknowledge that. You may, may recall, I think, in the conversation, at one point, the proposed date was to spend a year, or closer to a year negotiating than 90 days. And I think that reflecting on what that looks like, there was a desire of, let's see if we can push that forward. So I don't think it's a reflection of, of a problem as much it is of the ambition, and sometimes we may have, we may have gotten the ambitious date a little bit wrong.
That's fair. So, because the next one is, I was going to ask, how close are we? But it sounds like you're going to figure that out over the next week.
Yeah, I, I've, I've heard optimism that, that it's, that it's close. But again, I'll, we'll, we'll continue to, to take a look. And again, I want to make sure that I bring something that I can both explain and be able to recommend to council.
Is one week enough for you then to, to come up with a recommendation, a resolution for the time?
I think what, what the interest would be is making sure that we have a clear chronology for where we are in the process, in terms of, let's make sure that we extend it before it expires. I think that's a good, again, and a show of good faith of that we're not looking to reset the parameters of a negotiation, as well as, I do want to be respectful of the work that the Bothell United Methodist Church and Bridge is putting into this, of knowing that they are out having conversations about potential funding. I think keeping a, again, if, there, there may be challenges to this project, that they may decide at some point, this isn't going to work. Again, they have due diligence periods and everything, but what I don't want to do is create an obstacle of where perhaps funding is, is jeopardized, because it appears from the outside that we're not in agreement. I think we haven't, there's nothing that we would disagree on at this point in terms of, like, that would make, that would be a walkaway point, so let's not create one inadvertently. That would be my recommendation. So why, why we would extend without maybe even having an agreement in hand would be really along the lines of, we, we understand the LOI really sets the terms of what is expected. Let's keep the LOI in play, because it'll make the, in the end, it'll make the final product easier to compare to. Is this meeting the needs of what the council has set out and what the expectation is for this project? Is it the right investment?
Thank you. I got so excited. I was, I was.
It won't be the last time when we talk to each other.
So, so I couldn't hold my excitement. So, okay, thank you. Sounds good. I guess next week we'll have a deeper conversation. Thank you.
Councilmember Curd.
Thanks, thanks for the update, and I really appreciate looking forward and getting the context behind, like, what is, what are the next steps? That's helpful for me and also for members of the community who are wondering. Information that might be helpful next week would be what some of those funding windows look like. I haven't been tracking with Arch about windows of opportunity for new funding, and so just giving me some dates of when notices of, notices of intent, or, you know, fund sources being opened, would help me to understand how long of a time do we need to keep this LOI open and available for negotiation? So just examples would be really helpful. Thanks.
All right, I'll go, if nobody else wants to. I appreciate some of the questions that were asked earlier. They were on my list, and I'm not going to ask them again. I appreciate you bringing up the fact that we, we did a 90-day timeframe that might have been a little optimistic, because I remember that was shorter than what was originally proposed, and we separated it up into different things. And if we were a little optimistic, I am totally fine, making sure that we, Bridge and the church all have time to be thorough and make sure we do this right. So I'm not concerned in any way, and let's just do this the right way and make sure we're all being responsible and try to get some affordable housing built.
All right, thank you. I think we have what we need. I, I'll just add to one thing that I, I neglected in my speaking points, but I know a couple of the council members, Councilmember Dodd and Councilmember Aldrich, as we were considering the letter of intent, you did make a request that Bothell United Methodist Church would do some form of public outreach to answer some questions about the project, because again, I think there's an important distinction here of where the city's role in this, we will be the permitting authority. We are not developing this property. Part of what the council's interested in, finding a community partner to do this work, was to, that they would be the ones that would find the needs, develop the project, and that sort of a thing. So the vision casting is not coming from the city. So I do want to just acknowledge that last Monday, the church did host a community meeting, and I know information about that meeting is available on their website. So while that's not the city's project, and so we don't necessarily, we don't, we haven't been pointing to that information, I do just want to acknowledge that it was a request of council members of, that that would be considered, and it is something that, that happened. So if there are people who are curious a little bit more about what is in the vision for this project, then I think, again, we are too. Those, those details will be, one of the things that are required in the purchase and sale agreement is to know specifically, but that'll be more at the point of where there's concrete information. Right now, for the vision, there's some more information available on the website.
And I also just wanted to thank, I appreciated your clarification around how we are partnering on a project. We're not just giving the land away and having things float in the wind. So thank you for that. I thought that was well articulated.
Thank you. And that, it's been a while, but that does close the section of the City Manager Report.
Perfect. All right, next up, I would love for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Council conversations.
Oh, yeah, I forget that last part. I got all excited. I was not very mindful or very demure. All right, council, committee reports, community reports, and conversations. Council, Councilmembers Orange.
I'm going to leap in here, because I think we have Becky at the ready to add a little more information. This is on NPRSA. We had some conversations about budget, always a fun, invigorating time. Kenmore, there was discussion with Kenmore about how to work with them and making improvements on their building that, in a way that helps them, but also accommodates the North Shore Senior Center. Let's see. I feel like I need to work up on a drumroll. Budget stuff, we're, we're good, we're ending in a good balance, but we are, had a conversation about having to face a future levy conversation about continued funding on the property. I don't know if anyone was listening to City Council at the time that, that the first levy was made, but it was in horrible disrepair and there was major panic. We're down to, I think for this year's, really fun stuff is, projects for next year is the crawl space repair and grease trap replacement, which, you know, we've, I don't know if City Council's had a conversation recently about the problem of grease trap, grease going down drains, but that is, that is something that the Senior Center needs help on. But the big thing is that land sites have been discussed about Kenmore, Bothell, Woodinville, where might a youth center be placed? And there's going to be more conversation in October. However, Woodinville disclosed that they have parcels that they were considering buying, and September 27th was the date that we were given on whether or not they made that purchase. And I think Becky has more information on that. So can I pass the ball to you?
Yeah, I mean, I do know that they have made steps to acquire parcels in their downtown as a potential site for a future community center in their region. I think the final negotiations are still happening, but they have publicly shared that they are acquiring parcels in their downtown.
Okay, thank you. And we'll know more in our, in our October meeting, maybe?
Yes, and just kind of a reminder, the NPRSA, as they're in the middle of this regional study to potentially have a youth community center or aquatic center, the three cities, and both King and Snohomish County are participating. And so the three cities have all been looking at potential sites in their area, and we're all hoping for a publicly owned site, because it's a little bit more realistic. But what's happening is the consultants are going to take a look at all the potential sites that are submitted, and then, you know, ones that don't meet criteria or won't work will get taken off the list, because there's still a lot of community engagement that has to happen. So that'll come later, once the consultant has kind of said, oh, these are sites that might actually work, you know, they might be big enough. So, yeah, more public engagement to come.
So October is a preview to coming attractions. Thank you, Becky.
Councilmember Dodd.
Thanks. Just to add to that, we didn't have a, a list of sites in Bothell that seemed appropriate. A couple of folks outside of Bothell on the board had asked about the Wayne Golf Course, and much appreciation to our staff who helped us kind of remember that as a council, we haven't really addressed where to go with that at this point. And so it felt premature to, to offer it up as a youth center site. Now would be the time that I think Councilmembers Orange and I would want to hear different, if anybody has strong feelings about that. And then the, the grease trap is that the, the kitchen at the Health and Wellness Center hasn't been able to be used for some time, so this will open it back up for programming over there, which is pretty cool.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Thank you, Mayor. If it is appropriate to respond about NPRSA, and then I also have a report from the last NUSA community partner meeting. If I understand correctly, the portion of land at Wayne that would be considered would be the, the four usable acres, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I, I'm open to that as a possibility, although I do recognize that public transportation to that area of the city might not make it the strongest contender.
And Council, I'll jump in here really quickly in terms of, so we did have a deadline of September 27th to provide parcels that would be of consideration. What was submitted, there, there has been a conversation, I believe, again, it was presented to me when I first got here, so I know it's been contemplated, if the Community Center for Youth Excellence concept that is one of the priorities of looking at joining in as existing priority was at the North Creek Sports Field, number three, is a potential site. And so we have put that forward as something to be explored. Just to put it in context, what is, before the NPRSA Board in their October meeting will be, there's been agnostic of properties, there's been a set of criteria of what would be looked for in terms of a successful site. And so the cities and the two counties that are participating were asked to, to put forward any property that would be, that it would be city-owned land that met some basic criteria. And so that site was put forward. What will happen then is, is the board will be given a, sort of an analysis then of the sites that were, that were identified, to see what would be the top choice, and the intent of the action of that meeting will be to really zoom in on, is there one clear site that's a leader, and then do some additional analysis on that. I think then, in terms of the, the conversation about the former Wayne Golf Course and the four active acres, just as a reminder, the council has work coming up in front of you. It's handy that we have our park instructor for the next stop I get the table, but I'll just, in summary, say that the master planning has not yet happened yet. And so the suggestion would be is that if, if there are no sites that NPRSA comes up with, and they are thinking that that's a site, I think it'd be best if, my recommendation with the council would be is, do that master planning work before we commit it to a, a solution. And if, I'm a, I'm a firm believer that if the right thing is supposed to happen at the right place, and you just aren't the right, at the right time yet, it will wait. So if they, if there is not an acceptable site for NPRSA to consider, then there's the not an acceptable site for NPRSA to consider, then there's the knowledge of maybe they need to wait a couple of years for the city to complete master planning and then maybe revisit that, that location.
Thank you. That's helpful context. And I don't want to move on with an update unless others have had a chance to respond.
I was going to say exactly what the city manager said and said, let's do the master plan and figure out what we want to do with the park first. So I appreciate that.
I'll also add, just for, for seasoning, if you look at the boundaries of NPRSA, we have two facilities in Bothell, a facility in Kenmore, the North Shore Senior Center as an organization, and our tenant from NPRSA also provides services in Mill Creek. The property in Woodinville is like almost in the middle of the whole combined district. So I think there could be a good opportunity to really like spread the love. Like it's great that we have a lot in Bothell and I'm not saying that it's off the table forever, but I think sharing more facilities across the district gets more people in those facilities and able to use them. So there could be a lot of good there too, if it's not in Bothell.
Councilmember Aldrich, did you want to go next?
Sure. I have an update. So Councilmember Dodd serves as the, like the Bothell Council Representative on the board for NUSA. And was unable to attend the last meeting. So I took notes and I'm here to share them. We, we're able to hear presentations from the Shoreline School District and the North Shore School District. And this is sort of in response to, it's the beginning of a new school year and it's important for our community partners to understand how they can best partner with, with the schools to providing community engagement and social services for families. And then we did hear an update from Bothell Staff Member Christine Skotin about the NPRSA and the Community Center update. We also heard an update from the community, so the King County Regional Homelessness Authority, speaking about, speaking to some of the leadership changes that have taken place there. And as, you know, new CEO is getting up to speed and hiring an executive committee, there's several job openings available at the homelessness authority. And then NUSA announced that their yearly awards night is coming up in January and they're currently accepting nominations of champions in human services who are doing good work in North King County. So that is available on the website. If you know of anybody in the North King County area who's just doing really great work when it comes to helping address the human services needs of our region, that would be the place to nominate them. So that's my update. Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to the, the other thing that I tried to skip that I'm actually really excited about. Projected agenda discussion is consideration of a community market and request for proposals. City Manager.
Thanks, Mayor. And at a certain point, this will come back to you because it is something that has been a request initiated by you. The council, just for reorientation, back in the mid biennial process in 2021, there was conversations about looking at ways of activating downtown and really having a community celebration and a series of events. And there was conversations about a community or a night market in Bothell. From that and the funding is where summer nights really has developed from. As we've had three years of that conversation and being able to really show what the potential for bringing the community together in different ways, there's been some interest expressed by the mayor in terms of wanting to get back to that original vision and seeing if there's an opportunity to do that. So before you tonight is our Parks and Recreation Director Nick Stroop to talk a little bit more about what a future phase could look like and some support that we'd be looking for. As a council conversation, again, what, what our intent here tonight is to see if there's enough support from council that we should take next steps. So Mr. Stroop will provide some more information and then Mayor, it'll be unusual for you, but I think you'll get to call on yourself first if there's anything you'd like to add in and then open it up for feedback to the council. Nick, take it away.
Excellent. Thank you, City Manager Standard. And good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council. So like City Manager Standard said, tonight we're here to seek council's interest in developing an RFP for a third party partner to develop a market series here in downtown Bothell. This initiative requested by Mayor Thompson would build on the successes and lessons learned while producing the city's summer nights programming focusing on a larger seasonal market with music on Main Street. In 2021, council approved funding to revive community programming that was eliminated during COVID. The initial funding led to the creation of a series of events on Friday nights in downtown Bothell combining art, music, food and culture. These efforts culminated in a successful 10 event, summer nights and family entertainment series, which recently concluded its third year of production. So the key questions for tonight are, does the council want to pursue an RFP to try to find a third party partner for a seasonal weekly market? And I, I want to note that that will actually, that, that work, while it will be work of the staff, it will not take away from any of the current city priorities. It will not take away from any of the existing programs of work. And then if you want to move forward with that, we'd be really interested in hearing from you of market type. There's a lot of different kinds of markets out there. There's artisan markets, there's farmers markets, there's not very many night markets, but there, there are a few. We'd, so we'd be really curious as to that. And then locations as well. So as we think about locations, Mayor Thompson has suggested Main Street, but I know a few weeks ago, we were here talking about lots EFNG. So perhaps that might be also an area that we'd want to consider. The reason that we'll need that information is as we develop the RFP, we want to make very clear to, you know, say, here's kind of what we're looking for. The other option, of course, is to kind of keep it a little bit more open ended and that could allow for some creative, you know, proposals that could come through. So the next draft, or the next steps, if directed tonight, staff will draft and manage an RFP process for a community market and will return to council by the end of the year with our findings and recommendations. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions and I'm going to hand it over to Mayor Thompson for further discussion.
Thank you, Director Stroop. Background on this, I think Councilmember Zornz was the only person on council when we had this conversation the first go around, but the original tent was, was something that then Councilmember Doer and I kind of thought up. And it was a combination of her really enjoying the night markets when she visited Taiwan and how fun they were. And I really enjoy in the south of Spain and Andalusia, how the communities get together on a weekly basis and simply celebrate and enjoy each other and hang out. I remember there's all sorts of things going on, including hacky sack, which makes me feel really old because I haven't seen anybody do that in like 20 years. But it was just a really good forum for the community to come together and enjoy themselves. And I, a joyful way of life is something we've talked about a lot here. And I also liked the regularity and consistency. So people didn't need to look at a calendar to say, hey, what's going on? Like, you know, it's Friday night, it's in the summer. Like, come down to Main Street, there's going to be something cool going on. It doesn't have to be super fancy. It can be a market with a, you know, some music and just a place where you can go and hang out and, and build community. I, you know, I've really enjoyed the summer nights events that we've had downtown. I enjoyed moving those from the park into the downtown to kind of activate that space and kind of show what streets can be. And in a perfect world, I would love in 20 years to have this be just a, a thing that we do that everybody knows about. It's like the ranch drive in, it's like the Yakima fruit market, you know, Friday nights between Labor Day and Memorial Day, you can go down to Bothell, they're going to have a pedestrianized street. It's going to be a really good time. And there's going to be something for everybody in the community. You can take your kids down there. You can go down there with grandma. You can go down there with your friends. You can take a date. And I, I'd love to see us move towards something like that. So yeah, and I'm going to hold off my other comments about questions that you had and open it up to council and see what y'all think. Councilmember Zornz.
Can I jump in here?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh man, this makes me so excited to get through fall, winter and spring and get to summer. Any rate, and thoughts were going through my head and it's not my day job at, for how to, how to finesse this. I was thinking, I don't want competition with our Friday nights for the city of Bothell. Do they work in tandem? Maybe, maybe they could. Or would this, this idea that you have, if we could put an RFP out, could it be bigger where we might need lots EFNG for some activities and Main Street for music, you know, that Saturday night happening? I don't know. It's like, like I said, it's not my day job. But if we can do an RFP, because I know there, that this is a business that is viable for people to organize something like this, it would be great. I do know that over the years, doing a farmer's market in Bothell has been a real challenge because there's competitions with Kirkland, mostly Kirkland, some Woodinville, Kenmore and Edmonds that kind of have the corner on the market for getting all farmers in who have fantastic stuff. I confess, I'm a regular Edmonds farmer's market girl. But getting farmers to come in is really tough, but maybe we could have a condensed, you know, something that showcases some, can it be a potpourri is, I guess what I'm thinking out loud here. But I do like, I do like farmers, but it can't, I don't think that it could stand by itself. Crafts, every, not every week, I don't know if that could stand by itself. Music, of course, music and food could stand by itself every, every week. But I don't know how that magic soup is made, the magic sausage, that sounds really wrong. But I don't know how you would make that happen and have it successful, but it could be fantastic. And, you know, we talk about finding ways to catch people's eyes, to pull them into Bothell. EFNG is a great idea. Get them up to Main Street with the beaster lights that you've got up there now. We could end up bumping up our population in Bothell faster than we, than we planned on it. But yes, Mayor, I'm, I'm like, two green lights, go for it.
Awesome. Councilmember Dodd?
Thanks. I think it's a great idea and I promise that's not just position six carryover that former Councilmember Doer had the seat before me. But it's, it's a great idea. It's something that, you know, we haven't had a regular farmer's market. There was kind of a blip in 2019 and I did get to know the folks that were organizing that somewhat. And there were a lot of interesting hurdles that I hope that if we're doing the RFP ourselves, we, there were, and these are comments from someone just casually sharing frustrations with that the special event permitting process was difficult, that getting even just fire inspections was difficult on a site they were setting up every week. So hoping we can help smooth that process if those are still true today or if they were true then, I just want to be clear, this is hearsay. But whatever we can do to make this a smooth process, I will admit as someone who does not spend a lot of my time cooking, a, a variety of vendors would be great. I don't know that just a pure farmer's market would, would do it for me. But I do think that if we can get some of those vendors downtown, that would be helpful. I don't see a ton of like grocery store options right here downtown and we do have a lot of residents that live here now. So I think that that's a really good harmony there. But I also think that there are people who do this for a living who are going to know way more than me guessing right now what'll work. But whatever it is, I'm excited. So thanks.
I'd love to see this happen, continue, expand. And the one request that I would make is that if we're, and I experienced this at some of our, our summer nights events is that the nine o'clock end time on certain, like around the solstice especially, makes no sense to me because it's barely getting dark yet and it doesn't feel like nighttime. And so I would love to see, if we're going to do a night market, like let's be serious about nighttime. Can it, we push it to 10? 10:30 is 11 too late? I, I'm a night owl, so I don't mind. And I also know that there is some, oh my goodness, Tony's over there. And, but I know that there has been some talk in this community about wanting to draw some nightlife into Bothell, that we have a lot of young professionals who maybe don't necessarily want to leave town for something fun in the, you know, in the evenings. And so this could, like, I would just like to embrace the concept of night market. Like, let's have it extend to night, please. Thank you.
Councilmember Aldrich, I'll own, I'll own the source. Just, I think in, in many ways is this was where the RFP concept is really helpful is that we think about with summer nights, we've been doing that with our parks staff and to some degree, you know, Public Works helping as well. And so part of the nine o'clock curfew is, is much about we have a community to take care of too, right? And so there, there is the aspect of how, what, what could be done if we get input from somebody who wants to take that concept and now expand it to being something else and run it from a business perspective, I think is really exciting. I agree of the, the desire for more is awesome and the desire of keeping our staff.
Oh yeah. No, I wasn't volunteering staff for that.
This is a good idea. So that, that it really is, it's helpful to, to hear that direction because it is something of what we're contemplating of why the RFP makes sense.
Councilmember Kurt?
Thanks. I'm grateful for your presentation and it kind of piggybacks off of that conversation that you were just having is, can you explain a little bit more to me why an RFP was chosen from a policy perspective rather than an RFQ, or a request for qualifications rather than request for proposals?
Councilmember Kurt, I'll give that a shot. So an RFP as a request for proposal would allow a vendor to be able to come in and we'd be able to contract with someone to actually produce it. An RFQ, which we had a request for qualifications, would kind of be a first step in that RFP process and then we'd have a collection of people to choose from, but we'd still end up having to do the contracting and the procurement to end up with an RFP. So that's, we just jumped straight to the RFP with the thought process that within the RFP itself, it would have what the requirements are, what the criteria is, and that would allow a person who is qualified to be able to respond.
That makes a lot of sense. I'm just wondering if there are enough qualified entities out there that would be willing to bid? And if there aren't, then would we kind of shift gears to a wider net like an RFQ?
Certainly. So I think, and I'll, I'll jump in for, for Nick for a sec here. I think we'll start with an RFP if that is the direction of council. And if we do find that we don't get the responses or we don't get the product that the council's interested in, we'd have to shift gears and think about how to find that right product. Do you want to add anything to that, Nick?
Yeah. I mean, we definitely would be bringing back, you know, what our findings were. So we would know, we won't know until we test the market and really see what's out there. There are a lot of markets and even in the downtown corridor, over the course of the year, we have 24 markets just in this downtown Bothell corridor. So, you know, it's finding the right partner, someone who's excited, you know, to produce one of these. You know, the creativity that comes with that, sometimes it's a little more difficult when we're also the regulatory authority. So, you know, some of the creativity that comes with that, I think is a real plus. And, you know, excited to test the waters and see who's, who's out there, who might be interested.
Great. Thanks and support it.
Councilmember Dodd?
Okay. I had a few more questions that I remembered. The, well, one thing that would be kind of important to me is like, I don't know, clearly there's a, a spectrum of before 9:00 PM or after 9:00 PM among, in the room. I am more of an after 9:00 PM person and trying to find places in Bothell to like have a late dinner or something. We don't have a ton of options. We have more than we did when I was younger. But I would love to kind of, I don't know how you work this into the RFP process, but have somebody who will work with like the chamber and really reach out to local businesses to say, these are the dates we're going to do this. You know, do you want, like, I think of events that have like a passport where you get so many stamps and you get like 10% off somewhere. Like help it drive local business, right? Like make sure that if it ends at like 10 o'clock, we have one or two restaurants that are ready to like feed people or something like that. So just really make a cohesive market experience, not just like there's a market, but everything else closed at seven, sort of a deal. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. This is exciting.
Thank you, this is exciting, I'm, I'm for it. I, the one thing you, as I was thinking about this, because we talked about a lot of EFG, but we also have, I mean, don't hate me, but we have the, we were going through some cleanup right here also, or right there. So maybe we can like think broad, this is where the RFP, making it more creative than coming up with detailed requirements, because there are a lot of, you know, suggestions here, but, but when we put up the lot EFG up for the design firm, they came up with a lot of cool ideas, and a lot of community members got excited about those ideas, maybe taking that to the next level and incorporating this new, this new concept with this thing that we're going to be working on right next, and expanding it to other areas that are prime spots but are, you know, temporarily out of, not being, nothing being done with, you know, and extending it to Main Street and all that, that would be something. So to answer your question, I think I like to have something that's more creative, like, come up, let's do some, like, along the sides of a market thing, which I don't even, like, what is a market, you know? And then going from there, that's the thing that I'm thinking about.
Yeah, and I'd agree with that. In terms of what actually happens there, I would be interested in keeping that as flexible as possible, because the point isn't to like sell stuff at a market, the point is to create an event that draws people in, that people want to go to, where our community can show up and have fun together. Like, and so I think if somebody has ideas for that, like, I want to, I want to see what they are, and, and like, let's, let's see what people want to do. I'm a little more strident on location, like, we have a pedestrianized block of Main Street that I am keenly interested in utilizing more than we do right now. And that is right around restaurants that could serve people at night, there's a couple bars right there. I think the, having it right there is probably better for our downtown business community if they're just like, oh, and there it is, rather than, hey, it's a couple blocks up that way. But that being said, like, maybe we indicate a, here's the, here's what we thought, however, if you think you can do something better, like, come sell it to us. And if there's something somebody wants to do that's really cool, but there's not space for it, or for whatever reason that space doesn't work, like, I would still like to hear those ideas and, and see what people think. But it's going to have to be really good for me to want to take it off our pedestrianized block of Main Street. So yeah, I mean, and if markets are, I mean, and I don't think the market would be the big draw, but if we're going to have, you know, a band come play, we're going to have an event of some sort, a cultural event where people come in, and that happens to draw a couple vendors in, that are like, hey, there's going to be all these people here, like, let's try to sell our wares, like, a hybrid kind of combined event, like, totally fine with that too. So very open to what it is, very much want to, if at all possible, keep it activating that pedestrianized street that we have, and as we open the downtown plan, following the comp plan, and we figure out kind of what we want to do with this from there, then maybe in year two, we have different preferences, but yeah, for now. I don't think I have anything left to say that wouldn't just be repeating myself. Is that all clear? Does that make sense? Any clarifying questions?
No, I think, I think you've pretty much hit it on the head, and I've got some good marching orders here, so we'll move forward and create an RFP, and we'll see what happens.
I'm super excited, thank you. Really excited to see this happening. Thank you, Kyle, for suggesting the idea, and thanks, council, for being in support. I really appreciate it. All right, now it's time. I would love a motion. Councilmember Kurt.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kurt, and a second from Councilmember Aldrich to approve the consent agenda. Would anybody like to speak to the motion?
City Clerk.
Thank you. Please see if there are no one to call your name. Councilmembers Orns.
Yes.
Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrichs.
Yes.
Councilmember Kurt.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra.
Yes.
Passes 6-0 with Councilmember Menke, Appleton, and excused.
Fantastic. Let's go to a study session. All right, next up is a study session for the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Revised Draft Review of Land Use and Housing Elements and Introduction of Associated Development Regulation Amendments. City Manager.
All right, and on theme of busy seasons, certainly the comprehensive plan is, is a big part of it. So appreciated, again, we had a bit of an opportunity to have context about housing already tonight, we had a bit of an opportunity to context, put it contextually around Snohomish County and comp plans, remembering that we're not alone. So it's, I think we're warmed up and ready. So tonight, we are joined again by Community Development Director Jason Greenspan and Deputy Director Christian Getz to talk us through another set of elements for the comp plan. And tonight is the draft review of the land use and housing elements. So just as a reminder, and you'll hear it again, of, you know, we've, we've talked about this recently, in July, and council adopted a resolution too that really signified around the land use map and what alternative we're looking for, and it may feel like, wow, I think we've talked about this, and when you look at the history in the Enchendeville of how many times we've had these touches, I think that, hopefully, it's not lost on anyone, that the importance of the next time you see this is going to be, it's time to vote, and we know that when we do the comp plan every 10 years, it's a pretty significant vote. So I want to make sure that it gets all the opportunity to have discussions at a table like tonight. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to our staff from Community Development to guide us through that last touch on this, on these elements before we come back and have a public hearing later and some votes for adoption. Christian.
Great. Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, everybody. This is one of the fun things that happens in Bothell at night, so. Don't say nothing fun happens after, after dark. So tonight, tonight, we're, we're finishing our journey, staff looking for any feedback on revised land use and housing elements, and then any initial feedback on sort of this primer for development regulations that we're going to be coming back over the next few meetings to, to discuss. Quick recap of where we are, we are in the final phase, in the final quarter of, of all the work, pushing forward to the, the upcoming deadline for, of December, to adopt both the comprehensive plan and the associated development regulations that are going to, that are pairing up with that. So we'll bring back, bringing back the land use and housing elements. The next time we meet next week, we'll go through the remaining elements and make sure that we're getting all of your insight and, and input on the edits that we've made since, since the draft slide. So this same presentation, or a very similar presentation, went to Planning Commission on September 18th. They had no edits or suggested changes to the land use and housing element. I do want to note that within the attachment, there were some error links. Those error links are, are links within the broader document, and we peeled them apart. We pulled the land use and housing elements out of the revised draft. Everything will be placed back in there once we have that final, final input, and we can post the, the overall full document, so those links will work. They were referencing other sections of, of the comprehensive plan, so they weren't, you're not missing anything, it was referenced to an element that could be in the urban design, or could be in the implementation, or one of the appendices. But once we compile the entire document back together, they'll all be there. So the first thing we're going to run through is, is the land use piece, the fundamental groundwork, foundation for how we're going to achieve the targets that were, were identified. When we came to you with the draft, there were three alternative options, the no alternative, alternative that focused on identifying density increases in the neighborhoods, and then one that looked at more of a centers-based approach. And then we settled on the, the alternative, or the hybrid approach, that sprinkled the, the development throughout the, the city and, and neighborhoods, increasing their designation from a low-density residential to a medium. And I'm going to switch to a map here in a second that shows those areas of change, just to refresh your, your memories, the memories of the community as well. And we, we touched on a, a number of items over the summer where we looked to clarify how manufactured home areas are designated, the subtle differences between fee simple and those where it is, it is a larger, larger site. We re-designated the, all of the R7200s to a RM, a medium density, and then we increased some of the FAR, so that was the, the neighborhoods approach for the, the 7200, and then the centers approach, so taking the purples kind of throughout, and increasing and bumping up floor area ratio as well as slight adjustments to heights. And then once we get into the development regulations, a lot of this will start to make sense as far as what those changes were, not development regulations tonight, but in the, the meetings to come. The areas of change, so this is the map I was referencing, the, the differences from the previous land use designation, where we either increased the density or clarified, or we added a park designation for a site along the Snohomish River that the, the city obtained, and we wanted to make sure we were, we were designating that correctly. So the majority, as you can see, changed from the residential low to residential medium. This does not account for any, any changes in discussion around those mixed-use areas, the purples on the previous map, where floor area ratios might increase, or heights might increase, that's all part of kind of that, the, the follow-up work that we'll be getting into. Where this all comes from is the, the housing and jobs targets. So the, the targets that we, we adopted from both the King and Snohomish County areas of the city, 5800 for King and 6982 for Snohomish, were broken out into these affordability bands. These bands, those targets, I should also note, they do not include the emergency housing beds, those are in addition to, so tho, those were emergency housing beds that the future land use map and subsequent zoning have to identify how those could be incorporated. But this is the root of where we, how we landed on, on that future land use map. And the next slide will make a little bit more sense as we, as we kind of work north to south. With the, the bolded target, the aggregated target there for Snohomish County, as you run across from left to right, the 6982 was our, our, our target, our total need that we needed to accommodate. The 0 to 80%, we consolidated those into these low to mid-rise designations, just for simplicity's sake, instead of breaking it out into each income band. What the hybrid alternative, the preferred alternative that was selected, landed on was establishing draft capacities, which you can't just pick and choose, it's a very, it'd become a very complicated situation where we would, we'd need to kind of carve away portions to hit that number exactly. Broad brush, future land use map designations that establish the capacity, so it's that 15,508, which creates the surplus of 8526. All of, all of that was based on assumptions for those areas of the city, how development would occur, what the density could, could accommodate, and what, what the projections were to come up with those. So we've created a bucket of capacity within both the Snohomish and the King County portions of the city. And the next step will be to go run through the, the development regulations, what the minimum lot size or the units per acre would, would be set to in order to achieve or reasonably be able to achieve that, that target that we've been, we've been provided and we've adopted. So it gives us some wiggle room with the, the surplus that the, the future land use map establishes. But it's a, it's an, it's based on assumptions that will allow us to pivot if we have to within our implementation process, within the first five years of monitoring and reporting back to the county, if we have to. If we're, if we're well behind, we'll have more capacity in the tank to make those adjustments. And we will, we'll see what happens. That was, that's the, the, the majority of all of the land use. I did, I did want to highlight a few of the, the policy changes that were within the land use element. The majority of the changes were all because we had to strike out all of the alternatives, insert the preferred alternative, so that was a lot of the textual changes. The policy changes, all of them came from comments, whether it was from Master Builders, King County Affordable Housing Coalition, Fish and Wildlife, or PSRC, or from some counselor or, or Planning Commission members. So, and there were half a dozen policy changes that, if you have any questions on, be happy to run through. We can hold questions until the end if you want. I can run through the housing piece and the development regulations, if that sounds like a good idea. So same thing with housing, this one's a lot more brief. It's, again, the majority of the changes within, within the housing element were based on the preferred alternative. A couple of the policy updates within there, they were all primarily provided by, or as a result of comments, that were provided by either NUSA, King County Affordable Housing Coalition. There were a few from Fish and Wildlife around sort of green building practices and trying to incorporate those within, within housing, housing production. But very, very few, and as, as you'll see as we go through next, next week, there's very few edits or changes within the, the remaining, the remaining elements. And the last, the last thing for tonight is around the zoning and development regulation updates. So kind of looking back, we have, we have a regulatory map that's combined, combines the land use and zoning, we're going to peel those apart with the future land use map, so that'll be our, our comprehensive map, and then our zoning map, which is a lot busier like this one up here. So first step has been to, to establish the, the land use, and then the zoning will follow. The development regulation updates, there are a few that are mandatory, that we have to include this year, the unit lot subdivision is one of those, so that allows for subdivisions to. Uh, the unit lot subdivision is one of those. So that allows for subdivisions to, to be adopted for fee simple ownership of, of middle housing projects. Or accessory dwelling units on a singular lot. Uh, doesn't require lot lines to be created, uh, more traditionally. Uh, the, there's a series of definitions that were updated. Uh, those were around either unrelated occupants, you know. Coming into compliance with Senate Bill fifty-two thirty-five, uh, adding emergency shelters and emergency housing. Within not only the, the definitions, but those will go within the use zone charts, the permitted uses, just to make it abundantly clear where they are allowed. Uh, which is everywhere where residential is allowed. Adding permanent supportive housing, uh, those, those uses are also being incorporated or will be incorporated into the, the permitted uses. Um, and making it abundantly clear again, uh, where they are allowed. Uh, currently we would just indicate, well, it's, it's a type of housing. It's a type of residential use in it. You can, you can. Build that where you can build any residential, uh, but the, the need to, to clarify that was, uh. Was, was timely right now. So, uh, a couple of other things on, um. That, that I wanted to touch on. So adding family daycare, making sure that that was clear is where, where it is allowed. And then looking at other, you know, those other, uh, other items within residential zones. So. Our, uh, neighborhood scaled commercial or, or corner stores with a smaller footprint, uh, looking to, to incorporate those within. Uh, the, the, the broader residential community where it's consistent with the scale of a, of more medium density residential where. It's highly walkable. It reduces, uh, VMTs and can be, can be, um, utilized by the, the, the residents there. And that was a, that was about it. Those are the high notes of, of kind of where we're going to go. We're going to look into next week. More of the design and dimensional standards when we get into heights, setbacks. Lot areas, planning commission will be looking at that this week on Thursday evening. And, and we'll, we'll kind of dive into the weeds as, as we go forward with, with a, a draft code update that will be, uh, wrapping up. To, to, to release, uh, as soon as the, the entire, uh, document's ready. So I wanted to kind of leave it at that and make sure there was time for, for questions and discussion around. Any of the changes, uh, to the, the land use or housing elements, uh, or any of the initial, uh, initial thoughts or, or comments on. On the development regulation side.
Sorry, it's a competition. Um, I really just appreciate the, putting together the, um, housing targets chart. The housing capacity versus growth targets. I think that's really useful. Um, and, and I'm glad to hear you mention permanent supportive housing. Because the numbers that are expected of us in that city. That has very little experience with permanent supports, supportive housing as a housing type in this city. So I think that, that to me looks like a major growth, like learning curve for us. Um, one in terms of. If like, we don't have much already, if any. And, and also how we message that to the community about not just the need. Um, and our responsibility for it, but also like how we can, um, be welcoming to people of all needs and abilities. So I don't necessarily know if I have a question other than, I guess what. Like aside from planning for it, right? And, and allowing it and making sure that there is. Opportunity to build and provide that level of service. Um. Like, how do you see that learning curve going for our city? And how can we help prepare, um, you know, ten years from now us? In a, in an effective way, knowing that we know very little right now.
That's a, that's a great question. Um, so around permanent supportive housing and, and how to. How to really, even, even if we lay the groundwork to, to allow it, um, I think it's. A lot of partnerships, I think, is, is what I would initially think of. Uh, a lot of the, the, the zero to. Zero to sixty percent AMI, uh, housing is going to require some of that, uh, not to mention, uh, permanent supportive housing. So I think it's, I think that's where I'd initially look, but.
Yeah, I think that's a, a great point, Christian. And it will be interesting to see in terms of how. Thinking about how Bothell's not alone in this requirement of what not only our learning curve is, but of other communities. And then who rises to meet, to meet that challenge. And I think about, um, I think a few of us have talked about Seattle Times had an article this weekend around. Affordable housing. So different, different subject, but around how the demand for. Affordable housing projects means not only is financing harder to come by, but finding qualified developers to develop affordable housing projects. Is hard to come by. I think one of the things that is always the, the push-pull of things like. The changes in the comprehensive plan is around the, what's the allowed uses and who's going to come, who, how, how do the services rise to meet that need? Or what is the support that's needed for permanent supportive housing? So there will be a, there will be an, an aspect of the city role around. What we need to do to regulate to allow. And then we'll have to see too around, I think, Christian nailed it with the partnerships of. Who emerges to meet that need regionally.
Yeah, that, to me, it seems like regardless, so there is need in our community and it's an unmet need. The demand to build it hasn't really been there. The demand for services is, but we have. You know, there's not many cities knocking down people's doors saying, hey, will you please build this type of housing in our, in our community? And now we're going to have a huge demand coming from cities across the state. Um, and, and so I think that as we look at those partnerships to recognize. How, um, how much of a challenge that is going to be for them to meet the demand that. Like, it's like we're catching up to, like not, like to match the demand to the need, um, because it hasn't been there in the past. So. That is, I think, a very diff- like, a very, a bigger conversation that I hope that we can have more of. I just want to be able to like lay the groundwork here in the comprehensive plan that gives us the tools and abilities. To help, you know, ten years from now be successful. Um, and, and I think you're, you're. You're moving in that direction with these, um, the housing capacity. But I do think as a community, it will be. It will be a challenge that we all need to rise to, to be able to like really take these targets seriously and, and, and meet them. I will probably have more, but that is, well, and I also think, okay, you also mentioned. Kind of the broader conception of what we mean when we say permanent supportive housing. That's, that's one very like. Narrow definition, but you mentioned like childcare's, for example, and, um, adult family homes and adult daycare, right? There's a broader umbrella of services that I think this, um, alternative is planning for. So that the types of care settings that are needed by our community can exist within our community. Um, and I really appreciate that because. It's not as narrow as this one narrowly defined piece of the puzzle when it comes to caregiving in general. And so just thank you for having that awareness and conceptualizing it in that way. I think it's really useful and will help. You know, ten years down the, down the road. So thank you.
Can I, can I add a quick add-on? Um, we are going to be starting the housing action plan, starting the end of this year into next year. So through that. We'll be updating the housing strategy from twenty eighteen. So part of that will be, you know, focusing on permanent supportive housing. How can, you know, involving, uh, other organizations within that conversation. Uh, so. Definitely one of those pieces to the, the bigger puzzle, um, that we could hopefully fit in, uh, to a, a plan to. How to engage, how to involve. So.
Yeah, and, and great. Thank you for pointing that out, right? Because, because this is sort of. You know, the foundation that we're going to build all those plans off of. And so to be able to have, um, you know, that. The development of the housing action plan in sight is useful. It can point us to the next step in that process. So, thank you.
Nobody else is poised. Um, I guess the perils of having, doing papers, you know, I kind of give away that I have some things tabbed here. And some of them are just thinking out loud and getting questions answered. Um. When we, uh, I was looking at page one hundred and eight, we were talking about, uh, talking about emergency housing. That is from the federal government's. Definition of what emergency is because when I think of emergency, maybe it's coupled with, you know, Hurricane Helene. But I think of catastrophic, catastrophic events, you know, and please God, we never have that here in Bothell. Those are much statistically less likely to happen than somebody who, who needs emergency housing. But when we talk about emergency housing, it's within not a catastrophic event, correct? It's, it's more on an individual, an individual family. Okay. Um, and so I will skip to my next page. Uh. Can you explain the pros and cons on moving fee simple li- lots to, um. Uh, being managed as other residential uses? What, what happened in the fee simple lot discussion?
Uh, surrounding the, the manufactured home.
Yes.
So approaching it from the, the, the same lens as any, any other. Individual parcel that is owned by the, 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 the individual or individuals that own the home. So it's, it's not renting the land below beneath, which is what many of the manufactured home park sites are. But those that are fee simple are like any other low density zone, um, as far as the, the land use designation. The zoning layer, the overlay that, that is on top of that is, is the, the, the protection in place as far as. It's zoned or it's, it's, it's limited to, to nothing but manufactured home development.
So that would, that would, uh, stop anybody who might want to aggregate. A number of fee simple lots that are next to each other and put something else on.
Right, currently, if you, I suppose hypothetically, if you aggregated the, the lots, you could.
Put something different on.
Divide them in, but only through the manufactured home.
Perfect. That's what I wanted to know.
And we'll be back, yeah, next week to kind of ru- run through and you'll see kind of the, the permitted use zones and what, what's changing, what's not.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then. Uh, when we're talking about putting four dwelling units on a lot, we don't have to worry about. Covenants. If there was a cluster of, you know, I don't know, that development that has four units per lot. We don't have to worry about somebody trying to place a covenant on that that would restrict the way the land was intended to be used.
Such as a, a CCNR, is that what?
Yeah, 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 something like that.
I suppose we, it, it would depend on how it's, it's put together. If it's, if the land division through a unit lot subdivision, you know. Each of the individual units beneath it would, would be the parcel. And then there'd be a shared land, there likely would be CCNRs. Staff generally review those just to make sure they make sense, but they are ultimately developed by those, those, those owners.
Okay. And then the, uh, I'm looking at page a hundred and, a hundred and ten, talking about the draft environmental impact. Um, statement that's coming down the pot, pipeline. Um. Will we get a chance to see that before we put our rubber stamp on? On the comp plan?
Yes, and we, we are anticipating releasing it in November and it would be part, it would be out before the, the, the public hearing, yes.
And we'll have a chance to see it then. Okay, thank you. Um, okay. I was going to ask you for, could we know the, the schedule? When, uh, Pl- Planning Commission is going to be, um, talking about things, but that's a silly request. Just ignore that one. I'll go to the next tab. Uh, when we talk about smaller scale for multifamily fitting in, um, smaller scale is relative. But this is just descriptive language that will be described later in code on what a smaller scale would look like, correct?
That, that's the idea, yes.
Okay. All right. And. Uh, well, I was looking at, I'm, I'm on page one hundred and thirty-three now, talking about, uh, FAR, uh, being applied to. Um, multi-unit housing, mixed-use, uh, centers and corridors, uh, outside downtown, including Red Barn, et cetera. How much of this, I guess this is tied in because I, how much of this. Abuts current single-family homes? I'm thinking up Hall Road. Would they be impacted by something right next door to them? And then Sunrise Valley View, I'm sure that there's some other resident, you know, single-family homes. How many would, um. Applying FAR would impact that? Or would that FAR be more in a center part of? Um, where we're building up density and less. Less on the skirts of it. You know what I'm asking?
Yeah, we could, we could look into that and, and as part of how we, we, we bring that back. Identify what the, the, the floor area ratio impacts could be. And, and identify if, if there are setbacks that, that are created, if there's.
Right.
General setbacks from another, another use, a lower, lower intensive use.
Right.
Um, and if there are any landscape buffering requirements. I know we do have those, but that gets into the.
Those get really important though, to folks. Um, did any of the public weigh in on this part of the discussion, as you recall?
Not that I recall, but.
Okay.
Come back on that.
All right. I don't, I don't.
Also just note to clarify for, um, Hall Road, that discussion, I, I have a mic, didn't realize we were typing there. For Hall Road, that is primarily the downtown district, which we will be reevaluating in twenty twenty-five. So. Um, although it does allow mixed use, that happens to be one of the areas that we're not necessarily making the change or proposing a change for in terms of code. Cause that is a downtown district, but other areas will certainly follow up on that question.
Thank you. Um, and when I was, when you were showing the maps, did I see west portion of West Hill is now residential medium? Uh, it is, he nods.
Yes, correct. Yes, there are.
All right. And then, uh, just a question on, cause I love, you know, neighborhood. Scale businesses, but I look at businesses really struggling in downtown and that are surrounded by a lot of multifamily. Has there been any kind of research? And I'm sure someone who wants to start up a business is going to be looking at that. But it, do you know of any kind of research to show, that shows how viable that that is in neighborhoods? Like, does it have to be a certain. Population that within a certain, uh, distance that makes those businesses viable? Cause I would hate to see. Somebody put a heart and soul into something and then not have, be, not for, for it not to be viable.
Can I say?
Yeah.
I think one thing we're trying to do, cause this is a discussion. I think one thing, the, when the suggestion of having, uh, corner stores was there is like to provide the opportunity. If somebody wants to open it up because it makes business sense, they can open it up. Otherwise.
Right, I'm just.
As a city, we don't need to.
I'm just wondering if that research is available for people.
I mean, it's up to the business owner, I think.
Just put, put it on them. Okay.
One thing I will know.
Oh, sorry.
Good.
Sid's been open for my whole life. Uncle Pizza's was a Little Caesar's before it was Uncle Pizza's, but also my whole life, so. But I also agree with the deputy mayor and Kyle, I didn't mean that, did you?
No, no, that's great. Uh, those are good examples. I, I was just going to note too, and while it doesn't quite answer your question, but just as a reminder, the city is going through. Fulfilling one of the council parties, which is an economic development vitality plan too. And so within that plan, we have now, um, I think the survey is closed, but we had over two hundred responses from. Licensed businesses in Bothell and we're going to be doing some gap analysis of who we didn't hear from, of what are the. What are the needs and interests from businesses? And so, you know, some of that is not, uh, necessarily us doing the, um. The research for businesses to say, this is where you want to open. But what we will be able to find out then is what is the interest and what are the needs? And what are some of the gaps that we see in our community? And that might then, that plus opportunity could lead to a business. And that might then, that plus opportunity could lead to a business doing their due diligence and saying, this is what I intend to do.
Yeah, that would be super helpful and, and that's a, that's a big lift, so.
The other thing that I would also note on that topic is that while we're discussing viability of these small businesses, is the neighborhood commercial gives people an opportunity to start a business in a home that they live in, that they already own, that they don't have extra, you know, overhead for.
And it might be a retail that is not necessarily dependent on foot traffic.
Yeah.
But it might be like a, like.
If somebody wants to open a CPA firm.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right. I'm down to two tabs. On page 139, there's LU 1.6, talking about transfer development rights. That is such a complicated discussion, I hope that we're going to be talking about that more on where appropriate places for that are in the city of Bothell. Someone please nod their head knowingly, yes?
Yes, I, I, I think this gives us the basis to expand that. Obviously, we have a TDR program that's in place for Canyon Park and it is a land use strategy that could help us get the outcomes on conservation and more concentrated growth where we want it. So it's, this gives us that policy basis to explore that further in the rest of the city.
Okay, okay. Something within that is also protect, the, the, there's language which I really appreciate is protecting ecosystems. I, I hope that somewhere we talk about preserving our urban forests and significant ecosystems that are part of the open spaces within our city. Which I think leads me to my last question. On page 142, there's, there's an item, policy LU 3.8, talking about discouraging development and land use that will adversely affect the quality and quantity of ground, groundwater. We're talking about recharging the soil, I, I, I'm assuming that's part of it. How do you measure and maintain the effective flow of water through the land, land that will keep our waterways, our streams, North Creek, the slough healthy? Do you have the tools to measure and say, you can't put a, you can't build it this close and put a drain here because we need this to go and feed, feed this neighboring stream?
There, there are studies that can, can measure seepage, water, water transport underground. And so there, there, there are mechanisms that we can, we can look into of how we could.
Okay, so some, some resource where we can get in there and not have a whoops, you know, 15 years down the road going, oh, we used to have more flow in this, like Park Creek and now we don't. So something where we can effectively kind of make sure that we don't have a whoopsie, a long-term whoopsie, but lots of work here, you know? Props to putting this together. Once again, not my day job, so I'm grateful for what you do, thank you.
I'll jump in. Couple of questions. I just want to confirm that I'm reading it right around neighborhood commercial. I thought in the packet that it said only in residential medium, but here in the presentation it just said residential zones. So like, are we, are we looking at neighborhood commercial in all residential zones or just residential medium? Oh, it was a few slides back, I don't remember which slide.
Yeah, we, we included it in all residential medium, so that's the. Yeah, sorry, it does say residential zones. The, we do have it within all residential medium on that future land use map, which is a, a greater area now and that we've, we've, we've redesignated most of those to residential medium, looking for, you know, areas that are more, going to be more walkable, more walkable, going to have a greater population in the, in the long run.
Totally.
And, and trying to reduce VMTs and, and, yeah, increase that, that foot traffic.
Well, and all of those good things could happen, I think, in residential low as well. It's probably less likely to happen, but I would be interested in seeing that legal citywide in residential zones and not just confined to residential medium. Okay.
I'm going to jump in and say, I, I think that makes sense and maybe we look at, should there be a difference between the two zones? But like, like a CPA firm in residential or just to use your example from before, which you should totally start, by the way.
Nobody hire me to be your CPA, ever.
That was the joke. But like, I do wonder if there's some harmony there, like in a lower intensity use, like I, anyway, yeah. I'll jump in and just say yes to that.
Anybody can jump in and say that. Say what? Okay. The, it said allowing small footprint retail, sales and service uses. I just want to make sure that we're using the term corner store colloquially and there's flexibility for a variety of like home-based service businesses. Like, we don't want an asphalt plant there, but like, like if, you know, somebody has the kind of business that people would drive out of the neighborhood from, like, it should be legal in the business, in the, in the neighborhood, I think.
We could, we could look to develop a, a definition to clarify and work through.
The other, the other question I had is like, I know that the comp plan is vibes and the development regulations are going to spell things out a little bit more, in a little bit more depth, so I want to not be too pedantic right here. Oh, and also, will we make language more concrete around consistent with the scale and the development regulations? Because that's pretty vague in terms of like what that means and could be interpreted in a couple of different ways. But are the development regulations going to be, like spell out what that means a little bit more exactly?
That's the, the intent, yes.
Cool. Councilmember Zorn's had a question about CCNRs. Is there a way, and this might be a question for Eileen, is there a way that we can prevent CCNRs that are more restrictive in land use policy than the cities? Like if we allow ADUs, we can't allow CCNRs, like that disallow ADUs kind of thing? Well, but I mean, but there's other things than ADUs.
So you've asked a, I think, kind of a difficult question. CCNRs typically kind of run in parallel to our land use processes, you know? Trying to explain what is a difficult concept. Generally, we can't interfere with the CCNRs because those are private, private covenants. There are some exceptions, obviously, for things that are unconstitutional, things like, you know, racially restrictive covenants that we used to see all the time. Those have been abrogated by law. But generally, there's not much we can do about CCNRs. I will, I do want to refresh my memory on the bills because I remember as this was, as some of these bills were going through the legislature, there was a lot of discussion about CCNRs and whether or not they really fit with the legislature's vision for middle housing in particular. So it's a long way of saying, I, I think we should follow up with you offline because it's a good question and I think it deserves a, a well-thought-out answer.
Thank you. I just, there was also part of the discussion, I am not interested in tapering FAR adjacent to lower intensity uses, like the lower intensity uses have their own area and the more moderate intensity uses should have theirs. As we develop the regulations to go with the comp plan, in a general sense, I would love for people to have more flexibility to make projects work on individual lots and I'd prefer us to err on the side of giving people more freedom with their property rather than less. And I had a question that I probably should know the answer to, so I'm a little embarrassed, but I'm going to ask it here anyway. The housing targets we have are actual units and we need capacity over that because we know that every property is not going to get redeveloped, correct?
That's, that's the intent, yes.
Okay, cool. So we're not overshooting our housing goals by double, we're just providing enough space so that we can actually produce the number of units because we know 100% of those properties won't.
Right, right.
Perfect. In one of the first slides, it was the change in zoning and I was curious, there was an area right off 160th that got changed to purple, mixed-use neighborhood to employment? And I was just curious what happened there? Down on the south end, yeah, the purple.
At I-405, the intersection, the.
Yeah, up by Brickyard.
Yeah.
There's like a school in there.
A office building, I believe, right at the intersection there. I think it's just of expanding the opportunity for mixed use where right now the land use designation and zoning may be a little restrictive than that.
Awesome. Yeah. That is very true.
Could I interject a question on that spot that you were just showing? I mean, in that, right across the street, is that where there's a, just south of it on the same spot there? Is there like a, like a little strip mall or gas station? And is that, that's in Bothell, right?
Yes.
Could we add density there as well?
It is the, it's, it's a lighter purple, it's the mixed-use neighborhood designation. It wasn't on the list to, to, to increase intensity, so it, it has some of the same allowances, just not at the scale of the, the deeper purple.
And those are, those lighter purple areas are already built out with apartments, condos and townhomes right now? They're, it's a residential activity center, I think is what we call it now.
We may not be talking about the same thing. One, on 160th, just south across the street from it, and it abuts 405. Is, that's still.
On the east side or the west side?
On the west side of the gold. The white, the white area.
Oh, I think that's the, like, actual exit, like that's the.
Well, next to the exit.
We may need to follow up offline with an address.
Okay, thank you.
To really make sure we're talking about the right property.
I'm done interrupting.
Kyle's going to manage this meeting now.
This seems difficult.
Cool, I think that's all I've got. Thank you very much, really appreciate this.
I'll jump in. First of all, I just want to say, I, out of this process and hearing what, what the packet was going through and the presentation, I can tell I'm building a lot of trust with the community development department because I'm seeing all my tabs from April and they're actually now in code. And I know that like, when a city council member is making a, you know, a comment on something that, you know, there's a certain level of like, okay, better do it. But I'm seeing also that the community's discussions and some of the items that are coming up in, you know, at UDA Bothell or at the elementary school gymnasium, I'm seeing them come up here. And it's just really encouraging to see how transparent the process is, seeing where feedback is generated, you're processing through it and it's actually going through all the edits and revisions. So I'm really, this whole process has built a lot of trust, so thank you. And I don't have any real big comments that haven't already been addressed, so. One of the things that I wanted to talk about that was addressed was the difference between, you know, it appears from that one slide that, you know, we're planning for so much more than we already are, but we're not and it's already been addressed, so thank you for doing that.
Again, thank you, I echo my colleagues', thank you for doing this. I think I'm seeing that, that progression as we're going through all the 3,000 meetings we already had about this. And I think we, we're doing, we're, we're doing, we're, we're almost there. The question, one question I have is, and maybe you tell me, like we'd talk about it when we talk about the zoning thing later or regulations, is we talk about the, what the city's goals are, like in terms of housing targets and job targets? And we talk, okay, there's a lot of demand, because there's a lot of demand driving those numbers, but how are we going to incentivize development based on this map? You know, like, not just financial, but like in other ways, streamlining processes, financial, whatever it is, you know, what, what, like how are we going to incentivize, for example, more dense in the darker, you know, residential medium now on West Hill, say, my, my neighborhood, you know? How, like, is that, is that a zoning question or is that a use question?
It's a little bit of, a little bit of both. The, we've, we've built it and we hope that they will come. And then there, there are a few other bills that recently passed, one around increasing sort of transparency and speed of permit review. There's a couple on the heels that are coming next year, coming due, where we've got to look at where, where cities with design review have to, to consider eliminating that to, to speed up the review process. Bothell does a really good job of achieving the, the state mandated targets and so we're constantly looking at, at ways procedurally we can be more efficient and effective and be helpful and remove barriers for any, any development project and hopefully we'll, we'll see, we'll see them coming.
I use that as an example, I, I don't know, I'm not the pro as councilmembers, like that's not my day job, so I don't know, I, I, my creativity is very limited at 9:30 also.
Just to, to tie to that too, though, in some ways what council has provided in terms of the vision for Bothell in 2040 and some of the things that we're looking for around, how do we leverage what already exists and make it better? How do we make more connectivity in the community, that sort of thing? As we, as we make some of those shifts and again, built on things like the comprehensive plan, but also then built on what we're learning around from, from the parks pros plan of like, what are the amenities people are looking for? Some of, all of that stuff starts coming together too of where, when you talk about like the incentives of what, what makes people say Bothell's the destination we're looking for. So I think it's, it's a, it's a fun time of being able to see all this come together.
I, I agree, it's not about the people, it's like, because, you know, there's supply and demand, so we're building for the demand, but how are we making supply get close to meeting the demand? Like we had MFT, for example, and we, it's not being used that much. We learned from that, what else can we do to incentivize?
I'll give you one other example, which we're actually doing now by looking at this through the flume, having those higher level land use designations so that in the future, if a landowner wishes to rezone their property, instead of having to go through a comp plan amendment, it's going to be a much simpler process to go through a rezoning process that still have standards that we apply, but it's a streamlined administrative process we're anticipating by doing this now.
Thank you.
All right, this is round two, because now I'm coming back with a completely different topic. And please correct me, but I seem to recall at a certain point, there was either discussion of or a change had been made to the area north of West Hill, we're on the right, or sorry, north of Bothell High School, that that at some point had been discussed or was going to be or had been designated as medium? And it has not, it is not here, it is still considered low. And I think to the mayor's point about like, if we're only including commercial neighborhood use in medium, then I feel like my neighborhood's missing out. But if it's going to be citywide, then we're not missing out. But I just, it struck, it struck a memory of like, wasn't that supposed to be medium at some point? So I have questions.
We, we, we can go back, but I, I don't believe that area just north was, it's, it's the the space that, that wraps to the, to the east of that, of that area that was redesignated.
Yeah, and so I guess like, I, what is the reason for not inclu, make, you know, including it with the other regions to the south and to the west?
Yeah, so we looked at the underlying current zoning designation and, and land area, so how the, the neighborhood is, is what it's made up of. And then I know there were other, other discussions around how it, how it connected with transportation, serviceability and, and those factors. So there, there are some, there were some, some concepts around incorporating just certain zones within that, that upgrade to medium density. And, you know, I don't, I don't have the history on the tip of my brain right now as far as where we, where we landed and what the underlying zoning is there, but we can, we can look closer at that if you want.
Yeah, I, I just seem to recall that at some point it was. Yeah, I I just seem to recall that at some point it was it was discussed. So I'm a little surprised to see that it's not included on this map here. And then the next thing is, can we go back to the the flum, flume, excuse me, flume? That one. There we go. I want to I want to not offend Jason. I keep bringing this up. I call it the West Hill Ravine. So the the slope of the hill that is West Hill that connects down to Red Barn around the Haynes Open Area. My understanding is that, like, while it is currently marked as mixed-use employment here, that hillside is incredibly unstable and likely not going to be built upon safely. And I am concerned about, you know, Eileen coming in and saying it's a taking to re re redesignate it as open space or conservation area. But I I am concerned about the safety of saying you can build in this, you can build higher-density things here and not that not actually being realistic.
And that's that's where the the critical area ordinance, the slope standards come in, where there are protections and there you can only engineer so much. So we while we may not you know, it's not likely that that a site like that would see complete buildout, you know, edge to edge. It would consolidate into the the accessible and buildable space, and the remainder would be placed into an easement, still designated as as it would be with the the designation as shown. But still having to to consider it. And and this goes to for for any site, they've got to consider buffers and setbacks.
My concern is that it's pretty big for an easement. And I do know that there's interest in the neighborhood to preserve it as as wild area and open space. And I like, I don't know what the process is of saying, you know, because there's most of that is owned by private property. If I remember looking at the parcel viewer. And so I don't I don't know what the process is to say, like, there is community interest in conserving this area as open space, being able to be outdoors in that area. It's currently, there's literally a couch in a treehouse in a tree back there right now. And that's currently how it's being used. And so I I don't know what that process is. And, you know, is it a ten years from now thing that we might see a change in designation? Or is there is this a moment where we can say that area, we recognize some of the hazards of building here, and so we can then change the designation on this map before people try to build there?
Yeah, so I think I think there's some follow-up we can do on that in terms of exploring of what that might look like. I mean, I think you touched on a few key elements of that in terms of it's currently privately owned. I think Christian's response around what the critical areas requirements would be is is that, again, there's a limitation of what actually could be built. So there's there's a push-pull there. And then I think the other concept is, again, if there was much like we have seen, community members rise up in Bothell before in terms of doing some property acquisition to designate things. You know, if there was a if there was an effort like that of where people were looking to purchase that land and then convert it, there's a different process there, too. So there's a few different concepts. I think it'd be good to sit down and and weave through them of where it it applies differently than what the map here would do. But I'm like, I know enough to be dangerous. But I do think that the critical areas aspect of it is, I think, a key piece of what what your concern is, is around, we want to make sure that like, it doesn't pass the eye test of this can't be developable to that level, and the critical areas are going to be the one that determines of when somebody comes in and says, this is what we want to do on the site. That's where staff steps in and says, here's what can actually be done.
I would just add one more thing that of of the I don't I don't want to quote a consultant out of context or or paraphrase it incorrectly. But I've even heard concern expressed that, like, the hillside might not even be stable enough for trails. And if the hillside is not stable enough for trails, then it's not stable enough for buildings. And that brings I have concerns when I hear things like that.
So I think that's where, though, then the when if there was a desire to build either a trail or a building, all of that then gets analyzed and what what can actually be built. So it is a it, I think, the theme that we're talking about of wanting clarity for people so that it's simple, like, that is where maybe that there's a technicality here that makes it a little less simple to understand of what people might have dreams and visions of what they might be able to do and then find out that it's not possible. But there are are steps included in the in the plan of where something short of a building being built in a place it shouldn't be would would prevail. So it's putting both of those concepts together.
So I'm hearing that it will probably stay purple for the next ten years. And there may be other things that come up that, like, at some point, would that color I'm simplifying, but would that color change based on additional information learned about that area?
Can it become green right now? Do we have to make it? Do we have to keep it purple? Or can we make it green since?
I think that's where we should we should take a little research offline, yeah.
Thanks for being willing to do that. I just don't want to miss this chance if it's going to be another ten years. So thank you.
I I'll just add, too. I think if we have a to simplify it in the same way, a purple area that can't really be a purple area, then we might be accidentally not having the right capacity in our mind if it's really just, you know, Legos that aren't locked together for lack of knowing anything about soil and how to talk about it. Speaking of green, since we're talking about colors, I have my own nitpicky, specific question about the map. So the green area between us and Kenmore, right next to the blue blob that's Bothell High School, is that the Magnolia Dairy property? So my understanding is the conservation easement does allow maybe like four residences with septic. So is is green the right color for that? And then are there any other green blobs that really would allow small dense or small intensity residential? This is from reading like old Seattle Times articles about it.
Yeah, that we we could look into the the Parks Open Space Designation. The under the the underlying zoning or the overlying zoning is where the the permitted uses would would live.
Yeah.
So we'll and we'll be bringing those back next week.
The the reason that I that I care, because, you know, is people sometimes get attached to, I saw something that said it was open space, or this has always been open space in my neighborhood, but it turns out it was privately owned, somebody was sitting on it for a while, and now it's going to be houses. And they think they've lost something or that it's been taken from them, but it was it was never open space. So I think making sure as much as we can that there's a shared understanding of of what's possible is important. So I'm being nitpicky for a reason. Still nitpicky, I get it. But that was that's something that I just thought of. Otherwise, as the mayor said, which I wrote down because I thought it was great, that this is more of vibes versus the specificity of land use. And passes my vibe check. Thank you for hearing us and putting that in this. So much appreciated.
Now you're making me look at the greens. Is Popkinie green? I so means, you know, the the green blob in downtown, like, north of downtown.
Yes, it is. It is a park designation.
Should it be public institutional?
We can look into to see what those nuances are between public institutional and recreation and make it really clear for you when we come back what those distinctions are.
I was going to say, this meeting is rapidly turning into should have been an email. All right, we've paused long enough. Anybody gonna get mad if I adjourn? Adjourned.